Welcome to the March 14th, 2023 City Council Meeting. Please stand for invocation by Councilmember Missions, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Praise the Lord and thank you for being here. Let's pray. Dear Lord, I just want to thank you for this opportunity to be here and serve these great citizens, Lord. And I just ask that we, as a body, seek your wisdom. We seek your guidance. And we remember who we are here to serve. We are here to serve you, and we are here to serve our neighbors. Lord, I ask for your wisdom tonight as we move forward and conduct the city's business, and I thank you for this opportunity to serve. It is in your name, in the name of your Son, Jesus Christ, that we pray. Amen.
Amen. Pledge of Allegiance. To the life of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. With us today, we have members from the Bee City Working Group.
Madam Mayor.
Yes. Member Missions?
Two motions. I'll do the first one to amend the agenda. The first motion to amend the agenda is going to be for Mr. Kirsch, who is here in the crowd, to be the last person on public comment. He's a Lynchburg resident, and he wants to discuss Breezewood Drive. So if anybody would offer a second, I would like to amend the agenda to have Mr. Kirsch, or we could do both together. It's fine.
Do I have a second? To amend the... Pardon?
Madam Mayor, I think our rules of procedure would indicate that unanimous consent of council. If there's no objection, then allow someone to speak.
If I'm...
Okay. So, Mr. Kirsch, we've added you to our public comment section. Thank you so much.
And number two, Madam Mayor, it is clear that we've had a lot of citizens sign up to speak about tax relief. And with that, I think it would be prudent for City Council to be able to have the discussion about tax relief for our citizens. So I'm offering an amendment to the agenda for our final general business item to discuss in ordinance to adjust the tax rate after we hear from our citizens. It's about having a discussion and being able to have the discussion with our citizens about immediate tax relief.
Second.
Do you want to speak to your first or second?
If there's unanimous consent, I think it doesn't have to be a motion, as just stated in the last one.
Point of order?
So I guess the question is, is whether there's unanimous consent. So as I understand it, the proceedings we're at is the mayor has asked if the movement or the secondor has any further comments before discussion begins.
Correct. So is there a discussion on the motion?
No.
Okay. Dr. Wilder?
I'll choose first.
Oh.
We've discussed this on several occasions, and we're currently in the midst of our current budget process, and there's several budget sessions scheduled for this week, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. So I encourage persons to come up for those sessions, as well as the public session is scheduled, I think, next, whenever the other schedules are scheduled for, to discuss the budget at that time period. Thank you.
Councilman Dolan?
That's basically what I was going to say. We have a public hearing coming up on April 4th, and we have a number of series of events our city manager is planning to explain the budget to the citizens. And I think we have a process, and I'm in favor of following the process we have in place.
Okay. Anyone else? Vice Rep. Faraldi?
Substitute motion to approve the agenda as is.
Second.
Any discussion?
No, ma'am.
Okay. So what on the substitute motion to approve the motion, to approve the agenda as is? So now we'll vote? Oh. Did you want to comment on that?
You seconded it.
Yeah. I said, I need you saying four.
Yeah. Basically, what we have, we have a budget proposal for next fiscal year, and the amendment to the agenda is to recognize the fact that there are some citizens that came to speak about the surplus, came to speak about the issues, and so it's simply to have a discussion on it at the end of general business. Other items have been added. I think this should be added as well. So I do hope that you will support the ability for Councilmember Missions to add an item that he would like to be discussed. I believe he sent it out plenty of time for review, and we can discuss it at the end of the business, the business tonight.
Any other discussion on the substitute motion? Councilmember Missions?
Just to be clear, I think that we owe our citizens, we've had many citizens sign up to speak on this very topic tonight, and I believe that we owe our citizens this conversation. And that is why I won't be supporting the substitute motion, and that I hope the original motion succeeds so that we can have this discussion in front of our citizens.
Any other discussion? Okay. We'll now vote on the substitute motion to accept the agenda as is.
The motion passes four three.
Okay. Now the substitute motion becomes the main motion, which would be a motion to accept the agenda as is. Do I have a second? Or do I have a motion?
No, it's set.
We're good? We're set?
Unless someone wants to speak.
Anybody want to speak? We're good? Okay.
Madam Mayor.
Vice Rep. Faraldi?
I think, I think the council member, I think in approving the agenda as is, we are renewing our commitment to doing this, the upcoming budget. Councilmember Missions and I have had a good dialogue back and forth on this topic, and I'm looking forward to working with him as to finding a solution on this last payment, if possible. And I thank him for the good conversations we've had back and forth on the policy more than anything else. And so we're still in a good place to entertain that dialogue. I invite you all to come back on April 4th to be a part of that conversation, to anyone who wants to speak on the upcoming property rate. But as far as the agenda as is, I thank my colleagues for supporting the agenda that we have before us and moving forward accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Moving on. With us today, we have... Pardon? Oh, okay. We need to vote on the agenda as it is. Go ahead and vote.
The motion passes four three.
Okay. Now moving on. With us today, we have members from the Bee City Working Group, who have asked City Council to consider adopting an honorary resolution for a No-Mow April. Whereas insects, especially bees, serve a significant and critical role as pollinators of plants, including agricultural plants, and are facing serious declines. And whereas Lynchburg became the second Bee City USA in Virginia on July 9th, 2019, resolving to adopt policies to support pollinators in Lynchburg. And whereas No-Mow April is a program promoted by Bee City USA and the Xerxes Society, whose mission is to educate about the important role that pollinators play in our world. And whereas the ideal pollinator-friendly habitat is one comprised of mostly native wildflowers, grasses, vines, shrubs, and trees blooming in succession throughout the growing season. And whereas the formative period for establishment of pollinator and other insect species, and the many songbirds and other urban wildlife species that depend upon them occurs in early spring as they emerge from dormancy and require flowering plants as crucial foraging habitat. And whereas No-Mow April is a community science initiative that encourages property owners to limit lawn mowing practices during the month of April to provide early-season foraging resources for pollinators that emerge in the spring, especially in urban landscapes when few floral resources are available. And whereas the city of Lynchburg would like to increase awareness of the declining population of pollinators, primarily bees, and encourage interested residents to increase pollinator-friendly habitat by encouraging pollinator-friendly lawn care practices on their own properties for the month of April during this formative period for pollinators. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Council of the City of Lynchburg, that the City Council recognizes No-Mow April in the city to actively promote and educate the community about the critical period of pollinator emergence, generation of crucial pollinator-supporting habitat, and early spring foraging opportunities. That the Lynchburg City Council requests the applicable city staff not to issue corrective notices or citations for long grass and weed violations within the city for the entirety of the month of April 2023, permitting all city residents at their discretion to voluntarily delay lawn care until May 2023, allowing pollinator species to emerge and early flowering grasses and forbs to establish, which may result in ground cover exceeding established ordinance restrictions, as provided in Article 2 of Chapter 26 of the Lynchburg City Code. Notwithstanding the foregoing, this resolution shall not be deemed to suspend city enforcement measures that ensure an unaccompanied minor, a person in a wheelchair, and/or a person walking a bike can be adequately visible to a driver. Further, this resolution shall not be deemed to suspend city enforcement measures that ensure vegetation does not intrude into the right-of-way in such a manner that could create a safety hazard. That this resolution shall be effective on April 1st, 2023, and remain in effect through April 30th, 2023. On May 1st, 2023, this resolution shall be deemed expired. Is there a consensus from council to accept this honorary resolution? Yes?
No.
No?
No.
No?
No.
Okay. Do we have a discussion then?
Yeah. If someone, without a consensus, there would be a motion as to whether someone would accept it and proceed as the normal course on any resolution if there's no consensus. And I guess, on the floor, Madam Mayor?
Councilmember Missions? I mean, sorry, Helgason?
He's got more hair than me and better-looking. I mean, I understand the premise of this, but a No-Mow April, my grass is already way too tall. I mean, those of you who've ever mowed grass, I used to be in lawn care a long time ago through college. We would spray weeds, and now is the time that you need to spray in advance to stop the crabgrass. Now is the time that the grass is already way too long. Now is the time that we respect, I appreciate the bees, but the bees aren't in the grass and the lawn, they're in the flowers and the plants and the, you know, your hyacinth and your lilacs and all your flowers that are blooming to pollinate, which I can appreciate that. Mowing somebody's yard, I mean, when you don't mow your yard, I don't know if anybody's ever been around the city and you see your neighbors don't mow the yard. What happens when your neighbors don't mow the yard? You start getting rats. You start getting moles. You start getting snakes. You start getting all these things. That's why we have a resolu, an ordinance that says, hey, if your grass is longer than 12 inches, it is March right now, the beginning of March. My grass is actually, I probably could be cited had it not been for the fact that it's spring. My grass is shot through the roof. I joked with some of my sisters back in Minnesota while they're shoveling 12 inches of snow. I'm having to mow 12 inches of grass. So I appreciate the desire to help the bees, but to tell our citizens, hey, it's okay, don't mow your grass, and don't worry about your neighbors, I don't understand if this actually meets what the intent is. Because it says, don't even, not just mow now, don't mow the whole month of April. There's lots of mowing companies that would probably, whether it be children that are mowing, or whether it be lawn care companies, that a lot of their income is based on keeping lawns manicured and very beautiful. People like that. So I'm not, I'm sure somebody brought with a good mind and heart that said, hey, this will be nice, we'll help bees, which I love having the bees, but not at the expense of having lawns draped all over and, you know, 12 to 15 inches of grass and having the negative consequences. So this resolution also says that the city can't enforce anything in the month if somebody doesn't mow their grass. Good intention, I just think it's not ready for primetime, and I'll be, I don't, I hope we all don't vote again, vote for this.
Okay. Dr. Wilder?
Move for, move for.
Okay. Is there a second? Is the second, is the second needed for that?
Yes. Needs to be a second.
Second. A second then.
Yeah. Basically, it's just, it's a recommendation, it's not a requirement, and it's just bringing more information about the species and our environment, so I appreciate that. So I understand the nature of it, but it's not totally enforced, it's just an encouragement and advisement. Thank you.
Yeah. And I really have nothing after that, but it's exactly how I feel. I don't think anybody's forced into not mowing their yard, and I think that if you are into nature and respect the whole avenue of bees, you would do what you want.
I guess the difference is, if, if, section number two wouldn't be on here, where it says the city staff is not itself a neighbor, or somebody has really long grass, the city usually goes out and says, hey, you got to mow your grass. They can't even give any notice or violations for the whole month of April when grass is really tall. So, again, a good idea, I just think a bad policy to just move forward because somebody appreciates the bees. I appreciate the bees, so.
Okay. I do have a question. Is there a way to modify the resolution?
City Council, if it wanted to, I guess, soften the language of number two, certainly could suggest that. I will submit, this is more of a position resolution. You know, we have an ordinance in place, and irrespective of passing this, the ordinance would take precedent. What I would submit is, if council would be more comfortable as a group softening the language to say, it would be more of a suggestion not to take enforcement measures, but to try to work with citizenry and leave it at their discretion to do it, it could. But the way I took this resolution when read, it was more of a position to support the bees.
Okay. Councilmember Missions?
I'd like to take the position to support our business owners and citizen entrepreneurs. A lot of teenagers get a start in being entrepreneurial, cutting grass in the springtime, rather than the bees. That's where I'm at. I appreciate nature, and I think that we need to preserve it, but that's where I'm at. And the recommendation that maybe I would have is, could we strike the second paragraph from this resolution and then move forward from it? And I'll actually offer that as a substitute motion to just strike the second paragraph from the resolution.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Do you want to take your second? Councilman Dolan?
I just don't get the point of striking the second paragraph, because when you get down further into the fifth paragraph, it talks about No-Mow April, so, I mean, what's the point in doing that?
The second paragraph would be after be it resolved. Second paragraph after be it resolved.
Oh.
The action of council.
Yeah.
So where would it be?
The paragraph that begins, "That Lynchburg City Council requests the applicable city staff not to issue corrective notices or citations for long grass and weed violations within the city." And it talks about even the section, as our city attorney said, Article 2, Chapter 26 of the Lynchburg City Code.
Vice Rep. Faraldi?
I would ask if council would be amenable to put a pause on this and reconsider this at the back end of our agenda, at the current posture, meaning with the substitute motion before us at the end of the meeting, so the folks who did want to speak here tonight can do that, and if they want to see us debate the bees, they can.
Can we do that, vote by consensus?
And, and again, it would be to maintain the current posture, so that's with the motion and the substitute motion before us.
Are we okay with that? Everyone?
So we do have a motion on the floor and a second? Yeah.
And I'm asking for consensus if we could put pause and move the same...
Come back to it on this position.
Right to the very end.
Can we approve that? Yes. Okay. Thank you. Agreed. We'll put it to that. Okay. Tonight's City Council agenda is divided into four sections: Consent Agenda, Public Hearing, Public Comment, and General Business. The first section is Consent Agenda. This section includes routine items, and all items may be approved by one vote. Vice Rep. Faraldi?
Madam Mayor, I would ask that we pull item number 3.2 out to be voted on individually. I don't believe it'd be appropriate for new members of council to adopt minutes they were not members for. So I would ask for those three new members to abstain, and then the four of us could adopt those minutes specifically. So if we could just pull those and vote on them individually, that'd be great.
Is that a motion?
Is that a motion?
Unless you can do it by consensus. I'm okay with that.
Okay. Are y'all comfortable voting by consensus to do that? Okay.
Second. Where's your second?
With that in mind, with that in mind, Madam Mayor, I would move adoption of agenda item 3.2.
Okay.
So with that, just, do people have to say why they're abstaining? I guess for our rules of procedure.
Yep. So I'll be abstaining from this vote because I wasn't a part of this body for that meeting to be able to vote the minutes?
Abstain.
Likewise. Okay. Go ahead and vote.
The motion passes four three. Second.
Madam Mayor, I move adoption of the Consent Agenda, which would be 3.3 through 3.7.
All right. Let's go ahead and vote. The rest of the content agenda, please.
The motion passes seven.
Great. Moving on. The next section is Public Hearings. This section includes all public hearings as required by law or as council may direct. Procedure: Staff will make a presentation. Comments will then be solicited from the public. An individual speaker shall have three minutes to speak. If the speaker represents a group, the speaker shall have five minutes. A speaker representing a group shall identify that group at the beginning of his or her remarks, and a group may have only one spokesperson. Each speaker shall clearly state his or her name and locality of residence. Upon the conclusion of public comments, the public hearing will be closed, and the matter referred to council for deliberation. Consideration of adopting a resolution granting a conditional use permit to allow for the renovation of three townhomes into two household units located at 1312, 1316, and 13.5 Church Street. Staff will provide a brief summary of the request. Ms. Rachel Freshheisen.
Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, duplexes are permitted use in the B3 district upon approval of a conditional use permit from City Council. Each of these three properties contains a two-story townhome built in 1914. If the CUP petition were approved, the three townhomes would each be renovated from single household units into duplexes within their existing footprints. Planning Commission recommended approval of this petition at their February 8th public hearing, and council was briefed on this item at your last meeting on February 28th. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would the petitioner like to make a presentation?
Sorry. I'm Will Andrews here on behalf of AHC Investments. Thank you, council, for your consideration of this request. Rachel, thank you for your summary. We're here today requesting a conditional use permit, as Rachel summarized, for three existing townhome structures directly across from the downtown Y. If approved, we will renovate the structures, creating three new duplexes, adding two one-bedroom apartments, three two-bedroom apartments, and one three-bedroom apartment to the downtown housing supply, and in the process, repurposing historical buildings built in, I think, 1914. So we feel it's congruent with the city's comprehensive use for, comprehensive plan, excuse me, for downtown, and appreciate your consideration. You can take any questions.
Thank you very much. If we have any questions, we'll call you back up.
Thanks.
Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor? Anyone who would like to speak in opposition? No? Any phone calls or emails from citizens?
I have none.
None? Okay. The public hearing is now closed, and the matter rests with council. Any discussion?
Move for, move for. Second.
All right. Any further discussion? No? Okay.
It's a great project. It's a beauty to find our community. We're glad for it. We continue to see major investment in our downtown area. All the historical structures are being renovated, so we're thankful for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Just, Madam Mayor, I'm looking forward to seeing this be developed. I think, I don't know where we ran off to, but I thank the petitioner for taking this on and redeveloping a piece of infrastructure, housing in an area that I don't think I've seen it be developed in quite a few years. So I thank him for it and looking forward to seeing it get done.
Great. Anyone else?
I think it's a nice restoration proj, project, and get it done. I know you'll do a good job.
Great. Anyone else? Okay. Let's vote.
The motion passes seven.
Thank you so much. All right. Consideration of adopting an ordinance approving the rezoning 422, 426, 434, 440, and 442 Victoria Avenue and 434 Rivermont Avenue, the Jones Memorial Library, to allow the construction of a new hotel. Staff will provide a brief summary of the request. Ms. Rachel Freshheisen.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. As you said, the purpose of the petition is to rezone this property to allow the adaptive reuse of the former Jones Memorial Library building at 434 Rivermont Avenue, and to allow the construction of a new hotel on three of the Victoria Avenue properties. The city's Historic Preservation Commission reviewed and approved the conceptual layout for the project at their meeting on December 19th, and Planning Commission recommended approval at their meeting on February 8th. If the rezoning petition is approved, the historic library building would be restored and renovated to contain amenities such as a restaurant, hotel lobby, guest suites, and minor additions to support the reuse. Two existing structures along Victoria Avenue would be demolished, and a new hotel building with a parking deck would be constructed on this parcel, along with 434 and 426 Victoria. A pedestrian bridge would connect the historic library building with the new hotel. The proposed hotel would have a total of 107 guest rooms and 107 parking spaces and a structured garage. At the business item briefing on February 28th, Councilmember Helgason had asked about the parking proffer. We've spoken to the petitioner about that proffer, and at this point, they're choosing to keep it. If the number of spaces were reduced, we feel we would need to re-advertise the legal notice. And I know Councilmember Wilder had a question about the general layout of how this project works with the site. We have some additional angles of the project rendering in the slide deck and in your packets. I hope that might add some clarity, and the projects architecture team is also here as well if you have specific questions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Would the petitioner like to make a presentation?
My name is Brian Cosman. I'm an engineer with Urban Profit here in Lynchburg and part of the design team for this project. We also have CJMW Architecture here, who is working on the design of the buildings for this project. We're excited to discuss the project and any questions you have about the project. We've been working with the planning department and the engineering staff probably about a year, and there have been a number of revisions to the concept to address a number of the issues that are associated with this project, the parking and traffic issues. So we've been working with them to try and address those issues best we can. I mean, at this point, we'd just like to answer any questions you have or discuss any other details you may want to know on the project.
Okay. Well, thank you for now. We'll just call you back up if we have any questions. I appreciate that. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of this project? Yes, come on up. Please state your name and locality, please.
I am Stephen Kozakowski. I am a local citizen and a property owner in the immediate vicinity of where this is happening at. And as someone who has seen the Jones Memorial Library sit as it's been and just kind of degrade over the last 15-plus years, that when I heard about this happening, I was like, okay, finally, something good and meaningful that they're talking about actually preserving the architecture and the design and the beauty of the Jones Memorial Library, but also being able to add so many amenities and things like that to the area. I think that the beautification of that area is going to add so much to the Lower Rivermont area, and as a property owner there, I think that it's going to really just bring about a great improvement to the local area there as well, too. So I'm excited to hopefully see you guys approve this tonight and actually make this project happen. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anybody else want to speak in favor? Please state your name and locality.
Hey, my name is Bree Curtis. I live on Rivermont Avenue. I have been homeowner on Rivermont for 10 years now. I'm the Assistant Director of a local nonprofit called Urban Mountain Adventures. We're very involved in the Rivermont area, specifically Daniels Hill and Lower Rivermont. So when I heard about the construction and the process of revitalizing this building, I was really excited as well, because that is a beautiful area. There is so much history. There's so much beauty in that in our city. And to see people putting energy and time and coming on Rivermont Avenue and seeing it for what it is and its beauty... and coming on Rivermont Avenue and seeing it for what it is and its beauty is something that I think all folks who live on Rivermont Avenue are really excited about. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anyone else want to speak in favor? Yeah?
Thank you, city council. I'm Jeremiah Gelzo, homeowner on Rivermont, as well as a real estate investor on Rivermont, and I think this is an extremely important project to greenlight. Rivermont needs revitalization all the way up, and if we want the city to grow and expand in arts, we lost the Ellington years back, and that was a great music venue, and I love that space, and we've lost some of those little key things, and as arts are coming back, I think, to Lynchburg, and people are coming back to downtown, I mean, I've lived here a long time, and it used to not be the best place to go downtown, and now it is, and more and more stuff that keeps coming downtown, that's where I like to go to. That is my hub and where I want to go listen to music, and I want to eat, and what better to be able to just drive down a mile or so and be able to enjoy food and a hotel or people to stay, and it also has a special place, because our family has celebrated events in that building when it was a wreck and opened it up. So, I think it's an absolutely beautiful thing to see happen to that area and something that the city needs.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
There's another person that wants to speak in favor?
Good evening. My name's John Lemley, and my wife and I moved here about three years ago from Richmond, and we chose the area in Rivermont just because we saw the vision of what something like this could be, just like this. We saw the revitalization, how the neighborhood was already switching, coming into its own to kind of meet the downtown with the upper part of Rivermont. I think this is a fantastic idea. I had, we were at a meeting not too long ago there, and speaking of preservation and keeping that building as beautiful it is, I heard someone say, you know, it's buildings like this that sometimes you find people, you know, dwelling in, and all of a sudden they burn down or something very tragic happens to it. So I think this is just a great opportunity. I hope you guys all vote positive on it, and thank you for listening.
Thank you so much. Anyone else want to speak in favor? No? Yes? Okay.
Hello, council. My name is Jacqueline Junior Linis. I'm a homeowner on the Rivermont area. I'm a real estate investor as well in the area, and my wife and I and my daughter, we moved not too long ago, about a year ago. We live right close to the library, and when we see the project on the news, we were so excited, because the library has been sitting here for a long time. At the same time, I've been living in Lynchburg for 10 years now, and that's so exciting to see how late the downtown area is going to expand, and we are very grateful for whoever is doing the project, and we cannot be more excited about it.
Great. Thank you so much. Anyone else? Okay, is there anyone here to speak in opposition? Hello?
Hello. My name is Kimberly Dyckarsley. I live here. My family has been here at least since the, in that area in Daniels Hill, since the 40s, 1940s. Coming off of D Street, whether it's on the right or the left, whichever way you're coming, we pray that we live to cross the street and get onto Rivermont. It's very dangerous. I actually did a video. I heard an earlier speaker say the word wreck. It's very dangerous there. So until there are issues such as traffic safety addressed, I'm gonna have to be in opposition to this. It's a beautiful project, but lives matter. We need lights there. It's too much traffic. It should do the neighborhood well, but safety first, public safety first. Safety for those of us who walk, drive, ride bikes, children on scooters. It's too dangerous to add anything else before adding traffic lights. Rivermont and Daniels Hill, there's five streets, five up and down Rivermont, across D Street, then you have Victoria Avenue. I almost actually got hit trying to make the video to even send to you all. I got out of the street, but suppose there's a child there that doesn't get out, you know, quick enough. It's just, it's not okay. So, for war two, we say not yet.
Okay. Thank you so much. Anyone else want to speak in opposition? No? Okay, do we have any calls from citizens or emails?
I do, Madam Mayor. I received one email from Kevin Landergan. It reads, "These comments are submitted in regards to Agenda Item Number Nine at City Council Meeting on March 14th concerning the proposed hotel on Victoria Avenue. I own the house at 458 Victoria, which is a few doors up the street on the same block as the proposed hotel. I'm supportive of the concept and believe that the restoration of Jones Memorial and the hotel have the potential to be a great asset to the city. While I know the city's staff has worked diligently to secure a project beneficial to the city, I believe its potential can be more fully realized with a few changes. I ask council to send the proposal back to the Planning Commission for further consideration of the concerns outlined below. This is a large hotel for a residential neighborhood. It's possible, however, that the negative impacts could be mitigated if the hotel was scaled down and more extensive proffers were required of the developer. My concerns are in three areas: traffic, parking, and noise." Traffic. Even with the future construction of a roundabout, it's a concern that ultimately can only be addressed by a hotel that is more appropriate for its proposed residential location. The nearest Indigo Affiliated Hotel is in Winston-Salem, and it has 75 rooms. A hotel of 75 rooms would reduce the traffic load by about 30%, a significant reduction in the traffic impact of the proposed project. Frankly, the traffic study submitted with the proposal appears to me to be somewhat dubious. With the addition of 107 rooms, a restaurant, an event center, vendor deliveries, and employee shift changes, the developer's traffic study simply is not credible and begs reexamination. I say this because a detailed examination of various tables and diagrams in the appendix reveals a comparison of existing condition, Figure 2, Page 122, and build condition, Figure 6 of Page 126. This comparison shows an increase of one vehicle on Victoria Avenue in peak hours. Intuitively, this forecast makes no sense and should be reexamined, perhaps by reexamining the model's assumptions or by using another model entirely. Parking needs have not been adequately considered. While a parking space for every room has been proffered, when the overall level activity is again considered, restaurant, event center, employee shift changes, and vendors, this may not be adequate. There is no parking study or analysis based upon the overall level of activity. The developer suggests using the already tight on-street parking on Victoria, there goes that one additional vehicle trip forecasted, or a combination of parking shuttles that are notoriously ineffective. The developer says it will consider parking in the design phase after the approval of the zoning request. The true extent of parking needs and accommodations should be considered prior to rezoning, particularly if additional proffers are necessary to adequately address the issue. Noise from the rooftop event center has not been addressed. The hotel will be twice as high, approximately 66 feet versus 30, than the adjacent houses. Noise will be projected in the neighborhood unabated by any barriers. Sound dampening panels or materials should be considered to mitigate this impact, and proffers considered as a requirement to ensure the developer does so. The architectural firm has indicated that this project will take three years to come to fruition, as we all hope it will. Taking a few more weeks to reexamine the above and ensure the best possible project is developed in consideration of not only for nearby residents, but for everybody who may use the proposed facilities. I ask that the council delay the project until these concerns are adequately addressed." That is all I have, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. Mr. Cosman, would you like to come up and address these concerns? You have five minutes to make your rebuttal.
Good, thank you.
Thanks.
So, the, there were the three points in there, and I'll talk to two of them, and then we'll let the architect address the noise issue. For the traffic, the study, and he mentioned two figures in the study. The figures that he was looking at was traffic. Can you pull up that, the map? That, just the... I want to show the site plan. Right, that was good. The figures he was looking at were the vehicle trips that were moving west down Victoria, past the library and the hotel project. So those would be the ones that'd be continuing out towards, if you're heading out towards Rivermont, or towards the Boonesboro area. The study, there's 30 to 40 additional vehicle movements within this block as you're leaving the parking vehicle, parking structure to head down to Rivermont. So the way you set up the study is to tell it kind of preferred vehicle movements. So as you're leaving the parking structure, you're trying to get down to Rivermont as quick as you can to then go to where you're going in the city. So that's what the study is showing. Most of the traffic is then turning on to either library or Victoria headed towards downtown. The parking, that's one of the issues we have worked with, with staff for a number of months now. We added the 107 spaces in the garage inside the structure. We're still working, the owner's still working to find additional spaces for additional options for staff or for the events, but there is parking downtown that is available and looking at shuttles from those city lots to this property.
Okay.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. I'm Mike Griffin. I'm an architect with CJMW Architecture, and I wanted to speak to the concern about noise for the addition to the Jones Memorial Library. Looking at this image here, the only outdoor space that I think the resident was speaking to is our intended rooftop outdoor space adjacent to the event center, and we've been very intentional about our design for that outdoor space. Generally, in this, in the schematic site plan, the outdoor space would be on the east side of the rooftop portion of the building, so it's facing away from the Victoria Avenue neighbors. It also faces towards downtown and then across to the 434 Rivermont Avenue property, the library itself. So we've been intentional about directing it away from potential conflict with the neighbors.
Great. If y'all just want to stay up here for a second, because you'll probably get some questions from council.
Sure.
The matter of public hearing is closed, and the matter rests with council. Vice Mayor Faraldi?
Move approval, second.
Okay, any discussion?
Kimberly, I would offer, I am more concerned with adults riding those scooters than the kids, at least from my perspective. So I do remember there, and correct me if I'm wrong, I thought there was something, whether in the CIP or some other documentation that we just went over, that actually is looking to target the D Street intersection in Rivermont, that might really mitigate some of these concerns that were listed for the traffic as far as turning out and what that might be. So if we can get a refresher on that, that'd be helpful. But overall, this is a phenomenal project. I think it's gonna do wonders in multiple ways. First and foremost, I see this as a gateway to two separate parts of the city. It's a gateway into downtown, but it's a gateway into Rivermont, which I think is unique. It's really at a very interesting part of the city that could spur development in a lot of ways. We actually need a lot of hotels space in Lynchburg. There's not enough, believe it or not. I know every other day, there seems to be another one popping up on the Ward's Road corridor, but we need more. We need, there's a demand for that, so I think this meets it well. I could not be more enthusiastic to support this. I do have some concerns with the historic nature of the neighborhood and how this protects it. I'd rather this go in there far more than it continue to degrade and we lose that asset, the historical asset. And I guess my only request is if you go through that building as you're remodeling it and you find anything interesting, please get with Mr. Delaney up the hill with the museum. I'm sure there's some interesting things in there. So, I really am enthusiastic to support this and want it to be mindful of those concerns of the neighbors, but truly, this could be the next big thing, I think, for downtown development.
Any other questions from the comments on here? Councilperson?
Thank you. And I'm delighted to support this as well. You know, I've been seeing this before, a long time ago, it was Patrick Henry Institute. I think they bought it for a dollar and said, hey, if you can restore it. And boy, they tried. I had friends of mine had their wedding reception there probably 25 years ago. There were times that it decayed quite a bit. There's other times when other folks bought it and said, hey, we're gonna do all these grandiose plans, and never went forward. So I'm delighted to see that this is going forward now. I support this wholeheartedly. The one thing I do hope, as Rachel Freshheisen had said earlier, that hopefully we can look, maybe even in the near future, we're approving this with lots of proffers. You know, and I, the one thing I am concerned about, in that capital improvement plan that Vice Mayor Faraldi talked about, also in there was a parking deck. That parking deck was like 43 million bucks. So now I'm looking at this, how they can come up with 107 parking spaces below ground. I mean, you're looking at millions of dollars being spent on parking. So I do hope, even though that's in here now, and as Rachel Freshheisen said, as she spoke with the developers, it'd have to be re-advertising, I do hope that council will kind of approve this, understanding that, man, we want to make sure this goes. We don't want to say, hey, you gotta spend an extra 10 million bucks or 5 million bucks on parking. 107 spots for 107 rooms. I know some hotels are occupied pretty nicely, but 100% occupancy all the time is kind of a little difficult to assume. So, I wholeheartedly support this. I'm thankful that the developer has thought, and had several of the neighbors that came and spoke in favor of it. I'm reading the Planning Commission meeting notes, or minutes, that lots of other neighbors said, man, we are for this, because this is a great shot in the arm to downtown Lower Rivermont, and it's a fantastic project. I wish you well. I hope this is passed unanimously, and then, again, I can, if you can get those 107 parking spots, fantastic, but if there's trouble, that there's ever a time that the project may not go, I do hope that you ask for maybe a little reprieve on that. I recognize that, you know, just leave it at that, but I hope everybody votes in favor of this, so thank you.
Dr. Wilder?
I appreciate the project. I appreciate the work. I grew up in Rivermont Avenue area, so I'm familiar with the project. I've seen it dilapidate over the years, so it's been a part of my life. So I cannot support the project as it is. I just have, still have too many concerns, as the one young lady mentioned, not just the parking piece, but the traffic piece. Victoria Avenue is such a small street. We have some church members that live on Victoria Avenue, so I've been going there all my life, and just to see normally kids running up the street, and now you have a big hotel with 107-plus rooms, not to mention event space as well, to me, that concerns me. I have several persons from the Daniels Hill area always talking, when I go to their meetings, they always talk about the traffic coming out of there. It addresses some of that traffic situation, but again, added to that problem, the ones I've talked to are still not in favor of that, because it's such a danger. If you're coming off that Victoria Avenue and trying to get on Rivermont Avenue, it's a challenge. So I'm not in favor of the project. I'm in favor of renovating the library. It must be the second oldest library in Virginia. I'm definitely in favor of renovating that. I'm just concerned about the additional space behind it, as well as also the historical nature that the foundation mentioned doesn't really, it might, the historical, the back portion may kind of overshadow the front portion of the library itself. So I noticed they had some concerns about that. So I'm concerned about the traffic, I'm concerned about the neighborhood, and what some of the residents said, as well as the email that we received. I concur with some of his comments, the concerns that he had, as well as some of the other neighbors. Thank you.
Councilor Dohlin?
Yes, City Manager. This, in the CIP, in the CIP project for D Street and Victoria Avenue, isn't that, isn't that the area that we're talking about here in terms of?
Yes, ma'am.
Traffic impact and everything? So that's really already on the, it's gonna be done. I mean, they're already working on the...
We're trying to work parallel with the project to ensure that there would be traffic calming and traffic... To relieve congestion, what have you, associated with a resource like this, yes.
Okay, so, yeah, I think this is an incredible project. I think it will just move this historic building to a whole new level, and certainly will enhance... will enhance the neighborhood. And it does appear, like you say, the neighbors are really, really in support of it. I just, I hope that we could get this done so we can eliminate the traffic issue. And I really am in favor of a hundred and seven parking places, especially if you're gonna have a hotel, restaurant, spa, you're gonna need every space you didn't yet. So, great project. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Yes.
Looking at your plan here, I see a roundabout. Could you put me stoplights there instead of roundabout?
That would help, that would help with the concerns.
To the city engineer, they did, the city did their own traffic study on that intersection and we used that study as part of, as supplement to what we did for this. We did not look specifically at that intersection, but generally, roundabouts are seen as safer than traffic lights. I know people disagree with that, but that's what the studies say. But the city engineer knows more of those details on that specific study than I do.
Councilmember, Miss Jones?
Larry and I are both looking at the same thing. I'll hear you say page sixty-three, if you want to follow along. So, a couple of things. First, I want to add to that and what you just mentioned. In my previous experience working for the fire department, I would agree with you. I've been to many traffic accidents at intersections with streetlights. I don't think I've been to any on roundabouts. And I'm sure that there are some. I don't doubt that. But, but I would, I would tend to agree with that. And Kimberly, I hear you back there. I heard what you're saying loud and clear. Public safety is number one. It just, I guess, could you speak to maybe some of the pedestrian features that are gonna occur along the edge of that complex? So improvements to sidewalks, things like that? Is there gonna be any of that that occurs when you, when you build this?
I mean, as part of the development, we would have sidewalks. That's gonna be part of the code with any site plan.
So there's gonna be improvement in the pedestrian features adjacent to your site essentially that are part of that?
We will have sidewalks and we can have crosswalks. And then, the bridge is helping to alleviate some of that safety concern of getting people from the library, which has the restaurants, the lounge, the check-in, over to the rooms so you don't have to pull your suitcase across the street. I go up across that pedestrian bridge and I go into the hotel building.
Okay. All right. Fantastic. And is that pedestrian bridge, is that going to be secured only to, because I'm just thinking, I know Mr. Bender will know exactly what I'm talking about when I bring up Norfolk. Are these pedestrian bridges gonna be open to the public or are they going to be open only to the hotel clients?
Just the hotel guests and folks using the event center.
Because I know that there are situations out there like Main Street Tower, Marriott Downtown Norfolk, where they have parking decks where there's public access to the pedestrian bridge as a safety feature. Just something I'm throwing out there. I'm gonna be supporting this. The history I have of that building is, and I actually see one person in the crowd who was there twenty-three years ago when my brother and his wife were married in that building. I think it was Dr. Clausen who owned it back then, was a government professor at Liberty University, who started the Patrick Henry Institute. So just really excited to see this move forward. I think it's gonna be phenomenal. Do you have any idea how many jobs this is gonna create? Is that something we know?
I don't, I'm looking for large yet. I don't see it. That's, I can get you that number.
Yeah, because that would be great to put that out there because jobs are so important.
Right.
And creating more jobs is a wonderful thing to do. So, thank you.
Vice Mayor Faraldi?
Madam Mayor, I do believe we have enough support for this evening, but I do think it's important to have the support of the Ward Two representatives. So I would ask, you know, if there are things that we could go over in the next few weeks that might alleviate some of your concerns, I'd love for this to be unanimous adoption on this, on this type of a project, especially in the district he represents.
Again, I'm not the only voice. Again, just from some of the citizens have concern about something that's statue right in their neighborhood, I think it's a little challenging.
Just thought it'd be good to offer that. Thank you, Madam.
All right. With no further discussion, let's go ahead and vote, please. Yeah, go ahead and vote, sorry.
The motion passes six-one.
All right. Okay, moving on. Consideration of adopting a resolution to either uphold or reverse the decision of the Historic Preservation Commission to deny a certificate of appropriateness at 210/212 Harrison Street. Staff will provide a brief summary of the request. Ms. Eve Mergenthaller, sorry, and Ms. Shanda Horner.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Members of Council, Chris Carlson is appealing the decision of the Historic Preservation Commission to deny an after-the-fact certificate of appropriateness to replace windows with vinyl windows at 210 and 212 Harrison Street. You are given a brief overview of this item at the work session on February twenty-eighth. I would now like to introduce the Historic Preservation Commission Chair, Shanda Horner, to represent the commission's decision.
Thank you.
Mayor Reed, Vice Mayor Faraldi, and Members of Council. As you know, my name is Shanda Horner, and it's my pleasure to be here tonight as Chair of the Historic Preservation Commission of the City of Lynchburg to speak about the commission's denial of a certificate of appropriateness, which I will now call the COA for short, at a duplex located at 210-212 Harrison Street in the Garland Hill Historic District. The house, a Victorian vernacular, was built in the eighteen-eighties for W. H. Delaney, who was a Lynchburg physician. I have lived in Lynchburg for sixty years. It has been a real privilege to witness the renewal of life in our city's historic districts. Although there was a time here in Lynchburg when many historic structures were demolished, much of the housing stock was left intact. Much of it was in desperate need of repair, but as you all have seen, available for renovation and repair to those who appreciate and value the worth of historic dwellings. While property owners in locally designated historic districts are subject to certain standards, they benefit from the understanding that the community's and owner's investment in the property will be protected and that the entire historic area in Lynchburg is known for the quality and quantity of its historic residential architecture. Work that is not in line with the guidelines chips away at the historic integrity of an individual property and the entire surrounding historic district. The issue before you this evening concerns the appeal of the commission's denial of an after-the-fact installation of vinyl windows at 210-212 Harrison Street. Per Section thirty-five dot two slash thirteen dot eleven of the zoning ordinance, when a denial of a COA by the HPC is appealed to city council, the city council shall conduct a full and impartial public hearing on the matter and, and this is important, apply the same criteria as the HPC before rendering any decision. On December the eighth, a concerned citizen called the commission's attention to the work being done at this address. As is customary, a stop work order and a notice of violation was issued for the replacement of windows, work to porches, work to stairs, and painting without a COA. A notice was posted on the property, emailed to the property owner, and mailed to the property owner's address in Denton, Texas. Subsequently, Mr. Carlson submitted an application for after-the-fact work done on the property and appeared in person at the commission's meeting on January twenty-third. Prior to the meeting, the painting that had already been done was administratively approved. The work that had been done to the porches and stairs was approved at the meeting. The commission denied Mr. Carlson's request to install vinyl replacement windows because they are not consistent with the Lynchburg Historic District's Residential Design Review Guidelines, the architectural style of the house or the surrounding historic neighborhood. You, as Members of Council, have entrusted the seven members of the HPC with protection and oversight of exterior changes to property in the city's historic districts. It is important to note that the Historic District's Residential Design Review Guidelines have very specific standards regarding the replacement of windows. Historic windows should be repaired rather than replaced unless severe deterioration makes repairs impossible. Unfortunately, the commission was unable to see the condition of the original windows other than through the photos that were submitted as they had been discarded. Had Mr. Carlson adhered to the guidelines, he would have consulted us prior to the removal of any windows and if needed, appropriate replacements could have been selected before he purchased any windows. This version of Lynchburg Historic District's Residential Design Review Guidelines, which the HPC is charged to follow, was adopted in two thousand and seven. Searching through electronic records dating back to two thousand and seven, staff was able to locate only seven instances in which the HPC approved vinyl replacement windows for a contributing structure in the historic district. And all of these were for installations at the side or rear of the structures, generally not visible from the street. This is in compliance with their guidelines. While vinyl windows are usually a cheaper alternative to the more appropriate replacements like wood and aluminum clad, they in no way replicate the design or longevity of historical windows. Perhaps the biggest difference that is noticeable is in the muttons. A mutton is a strip of wood or metal separating and holding panes of glass in the window. The muttons on the vinyl windows in question, and you'll see this in photographs right behind me, are interior muttons with a much thinner profile than on historic windows. And anybody who knows vinyl windows can recognize this. There are a number of ways to update windows when necessary while still following the guidelines. I lost my place, I'm sorry. Additionally, this is not Mr. Carlson's first purchase of a historic property. In two thousand and twenty, he purchased the address, the dwelling at 209 Madison Street, and was mailed a new owner's letter and pamphlet, which provided him with information about historic district requirements. Prior to the sale of that property in two thousand and twenty-two, two COAs were submitted and approved. Likewise, when he approved, when he purchased the duplex at 210-212 Harrison Street in April two thousand and twenty-one, the same information was mailed to him. He was obviously still aware of historic district guidelines because he applied for a COA for roof replacement in October two thousand and twenty-one, and it was approved. The members of the HPC are unanimously opposed to the installation of vinyl windows that are readily visible from the street in any historic structure in any of our historic districts. We strongly believe that it is of the utmost importance to adhere to the standards promulgated in two thousand and seven. Once we deviate, there will be no turning back. And once we cease to make decisions that are based on the national standards of historic preservation, we fear that it will lower the value of resident homeowners who have elected to make modifications to their properties and followed the guidelines out of respect for their neighbor's property. Although Mr. Carlson is a resident of Texas, there is no question that he was aware that the property he bought on Harrison Street was located in the Garland Hill Historic District. And that as such, he was required to request a COA for any work done to the exterior of the property. We are deeply sorry that he elected not to follow the district, historic district guidelines and that we are here before you this evening. In the interest of protecting all properties in Lynchburg's historic districts, we ask you to uphold the commission's decision. And I'm just about to wind up, but I want to say that I'm very glad to follow the Jones Library. Because if you think about that, this project is possible because of historic tax credits. And what is going on downtown is made possible in many instances by historic tax credits, making the tax base fall on businesses and not so much on individuals. So I'm just about done. And what I'm saying in summary is that vinyl windows are not appropriate under any circumstances on historic buildings where they are visible from the street. I'm asking you, please, don't set a precedent by allowing one property owner to blatantly disregard historic district guidelines. And I thank you for the opportunity to speak and later on, if you have questions, either I will answer them.
Thank you very much. Ms. Faraldi?
Madam Mayor, prior to us conducting the public hearing, I would phrase this a very long-winded question to our city attorney. I don't know if it's a point of order or whatnot, but I say this with sincere appreciation of Ms. Homer and her thorough explanation of the Historic Planning Commission's perspective on this. But she cited a part of city code, I believe, that says city council will impart or allow for a impartial public hearing process. And again, I say this with immense respect to the perspective that were very articulately Those for and against will have three minutes individually and five minutes if they represent a group. It's my understanding the petitioner here, or the developer, is here tonight and he would only have three minutes to respond to close to fifteen minutes of why we should go a certain direction. Is that, do we have a conflict here based on how this was discussed? I'm trying to be fair and impartial in allowing, you know, equal time to both parties.
What I would submit is because you have the, I guess, the person appealing the decision, you all have the ability to waive any time requirement to permit them to be able to respond to anything that was presented by city staff. So the reason there wasn't a time requirement with the presenters is because it wasn't part of the public hearing, it was the staff presentation, which is typical. It was the staff presentation, which is typically fairly brief from our experience. But certainly because there should be a full and impartial hearing and because city council would want to ensure due process to the individual making the appeal, it wouldn't be unreasonable to permit that person to present as they need, you know, to be properly heard.
Madam Mayor, the petitioner does get a 10-minute time limit and then a five-minute for rebuttal.
Madam Mayor, I just wanted to make sure we were all on the same page. And I think the city attorney, I think that'd be fine by me.
Okay. Would the petitioner like to make a presentation? Did he leave? The homeowner left? Okay. Okay. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor? Yes?
In favor of holding the HPC?
Yeah, this would be in favor of upholding the decision of the commission. Please state your name and locality, please.
Madam Mayor and members of council, I'm Frances Calhoun, 400 Madison Street, Lynchburg and Garland Hill Historic District. I have lived in the Garland Hill Historic District for 34 years. And during this time, many of the homes have been beautifully restored at great expenditures of energy and money, and this has vastly increased the city's tax base. And I know that is always of a budgetary concern. I would like to point out that the appellant in this case is not your typical homeowner who is restoring a house for his long-term personal residence. This is an investor who has bought houses in Lynchburg and is renovating them and flipping them. And it, my understanding that his intention is to return, when this project is done, to his primary residents in Texas. You know, people buy homes in historic districts with the expectation that they will be insulated from this type of situation. For you to overturn the action of the HPC in this would be terribly detrimental not only to the Garland Hill Historic District, but to all the districts throughout Lynchburg. And it would also be a deterrent to people who are looking to buy homes to restore because they feel like they would not be supported by the city in applying the historic guidelines. And I would like to remind you that the HPC commissioners are appointed by council for the express purpose of maintaining the integrity of these homes. And, you know, these commissioners spend countless hours, and they do this on a volunteer basis with only the satisfaction that they get of seeing these homes renovated according to guidelines with appropriate materials. So I urge you to support the correct action taken by the HPC in this case. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Calhoun. Anyone else like to speak in favor? Yes, sir? If there's anyone else that's going to speak in favor, you can go ahead and get in line if you'd like.
Members of the city council, my name is Bill Watson. I live at 1014 Harrison Street in Lynchburg. And six years ago, I was a retiring lawyer living in Florida, and we had lived in historic homes our whole lives. And we wanted to get out of Florida. I had a whole wine collection destroyed by a hurricane, but anyway, that's... Moving to an historic property was a number-one concern. The thing that drove us to Lynchburg not only was the house we live in, but the community we live in, the community that prizes old homes. And we visited many communities where a beautiful old home was next door to a car dealership, was next door to a grocery store. And there was a home here, there was a home there. Here, we have streets filled with historic structures, which is really unique and welcoming, and we have a community that supports that. And that's what sold us on Lynchburg. Now, in this case, as you can see on the pictures, the picture on the far right demonstrates what a wooden window looks like. It's got muttons that are thick, they're wood, and each one holds a piece of glass. The one on the top is vinyl windows, which is a piece of glass and a vinyl mesh behind it. There's a distinct difference, and the thought occurs to me, well, why do we care? Well, why don't we care? I mean, if we are devoted to historic preservation, we start with windows and don't end there. We restore the whole house. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Good evening. My name's Mike Urquiaaga. I'm a homeowner on Rivermont and Cabell Street. That's two of the four historic districts. I've lived in two additional, Diamond Tail and Garland Tail. I used to live across the street from the house in question on Harrison Street. For the sake of transparency, I'm also the co-chair, vice chair on the HPC. I'm here to support our decision for the reasons that the people prior have spoken. These aren't appropriate per the bylaws that we were provided to support. The homeowner knew what he purchased, when he purchased it. He knew the process because he's followed it on previous applications. I can't say why he chose not to hear, but he didn't. It's unfortunate, as we expressed to him. We wish he would have come forward at the beginning of the process. We could have steered him on the right path versus corrective action afterwards. I also appreciate what Ms. Dolan said in the working session about the danger of approving this after the fact and the precedent that sets to others that live in historic districts. I'll do what I want, I'll ask for forgiveness, and take it from there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else want to speak in favor? Anyone want to speak in opposition of supporting the HPC? No? Okay. Any emails or phone calls from citizens?
There are none.
Okay. Okay, well, the public hearing is now closed, and the matter rests with council. Have a motion? Yes?
I'll make a motion that we reverse the Historic Preservation Commission, which is Resolution B.
Does she want to motion to reverse their decision?
Yes.
Is there a second on that motion?
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
Yeah, thank you. You know, as I look at this and as I hear the concerns, and as I drove over there to look at these pictures, you know, we saw these, the pictures, and then I drove over there. Sadly, lots of the houses on the way to this house were placarded, were abandoned, were boarded up. And so as you go through the historic district, I talked to some of the neighbors. I know Ms. Shandra said that we need to be fair and impartial. So I talked to some of the neighbors and thought what they thought. A gentleman who lives right across the street, Richard Akimoto, he's out of town, or he would have been here tonight, but he said, "Feel free to share this with council." Says, "Jeff, 100% in favor of them getting the appeal and keeping the windows. They've invested thousands of dollars into improving that property, and it absolutely improves the neighborhood. The city needs to encourage people to invest in the properties, not chase them away." I see those windows literally every single day. Again, he lives right across the street. I see those windows literally every single day. They do not bother me in the slightest. So when I look at this particular issue that's before us and looking at it objectively, I look at, as mentioned by the Historic Preservation Commission, these are guidelines. So the guidelines are not rules and laws and ordinances, they're guidelines. And guidelines are subject to interpretation, especially when they're dealing with the aesthetics. It takes a very difficult and a highly trained eye to actually see the second-story windows that we're looking at. The first-floor windows are the ones with the mullions still, the wooden windows in there. The difference is on the second floor. The second floor, very difficult to see. I had to get out of my car and walk up there in order to see that maybe they're different, and obviously, they're not finished with the painting and everything. So when I look at this and I hear from the neighbors that are actually in the historic preservation, the historic districts, and they can appreciate the fact that somebody's going to spend their own money to improve these houses, I think that's a positive thing. Again, as I drove by, I saw lots of places that are placarded up. Again, these are guidelines. And I think about the folks that aren't investing in these houses, the ones that are empty, the ones that have the placards that say, "Hey, this is uninhabitable." And I think of my own gas bill last month. I have an old house, 110, 120 years old. I have new windows, and my gas bill was 500 bucks last month. And I have very well-insulated windows. And I think about some of these old windows, like an 1850 house, that I don't even know if you can actually get that same kind of blown glass anymore. So I can appreciate the perspective of the Historic Preservation Commission and their recommendation, but I also appreciate the property owner, and I appreciate what the neighbors have said that recognize the thousands of dollars that are being spent to improve. I also look at these different windows, and when you look at the picture on the left, the after-picture, pretty hard to tell the difference between that top-floor window and the bottom-floor window from the naked eye, because it is the second floor. The other window that I think we talked about before was the one on the bottom. That's actually a window on the bottom underneath the porch. The side one is the door. So I do hope that we will side with the property owner. I recognize that some of the comments that were made earlier today weren't really fair and objective because they talked about the individual owns a property. Talked about the individual owns a property who may reside in Texas, or he may not be here, or he made this, or he made that, or he has done this before, and all these kind of things. That isn't fair and objective. What is fair and objective is we look at this specific case and say, you know, does that really make a difference? We listen to the neighbors who say, "I am thankful that they're improving the neighborhood." So I do hope you will support the reversing of the Historic Preservation Commission decision, because the alternative is to say, "Tell this property owner to rip out all these windows that you just put in. Take them out of your own house. Throw them away, sell them if you can, and put in some old windows that may not be insulated near as well as these double-pane insulated windows." So I do hope you will support reversing the Historic Preservation Commission's decision. I do thank the Historic Preservation Commission members for their diligence. I know it's not an easy task, as you mentioned, Ms. Shanda. I always say Shanda Rowe, but I know it's Horner now, so... Things, I appreciate your diligence, but I just think I'd like to side with the property owner. Thank you.
Council missions? Anyone else? Dr. Wilder?
Yes, I do not support that motion. I support the motion from the Historic Committee. Again, I live in Garland Hill Historic Area. My house is 170 years old. So when you move into the historic district, you know what you're getting into, because you know you have the different rights, the different standards that they expect you to uphold when you're renovating your house. So when we renovated my house, I made sure I had to do the right colors, I had to do the right additions and that kind of thing for my house because of historical nature. So when you're moving into there and you're given the requirements of what it means to move into that section. So I don't think it's fair to the other property owners who are renovating property, who try to adhere to the codes that we have established and make sure that renovating property, they do in accordance, especially for someone who's renovated property before. They should know what the standards are. So I support the Historic Preservation Committee on what their standards are, because again, for the rest of the neighbors. You know, several neighbors spoke against it today. So I've received text messages from other neighbors, from also investors in the area that have spent money in renovating the property so it adheres to the standards of the Historic Committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Dolan?
Thank you. I'm not going to support Councilmember Henderson's motion either, and primarily because I'm applying the HPC rules in my decision-making. And also, Mrs. Calhoun spoke very eloquently as to why we should not support this.
Ms. Fraldy?
We get something like this very infrequently, just for the record. This is so different than anything else we go over. At the last meeting, one of the things I highlighted was, you know, I get all perspectives on this, and as a bit of a history buff, I want to protect it as best I can. Trying to look at this objectively and say, okay, what are the most egregious things in looking at the differences? And I pulled up actually Google Maps, and you're actually able to really able to zoom in. I think the photo is from 2015, for the record, if anyone wants to. You can kind of go on the street and zoom all the way in and see what the house used to look like as opposed to now. The biggest difference I'm seeing is something that I thought was a door and was told, my eyes are bad. There are three windows that are highlighted in a yellow box. Two upstairs, one is higher than the other, and then the farthest lower one, I believe, is right by the front door on the left-hand side. If I'm being candid, the most egregious difference is that window, not necessarily... And I hear it, I get it. The vinyl windows, that's a problem. I understand it. In trying to be hearing fairness to the issue, I would submit, if it's possible to have that bottom one addressed, I'd be willing to take that middle path. And I think what council can do is demonstrate, we don't necessarily like that this is the path that it went, but we're not trying to totally punish the property owner with rip all of them out and fix it, nor are we saying, we're just going to, quote-unquote, you know, avoid our policies. I don't know if that's possible, and I do realize I very much am splitting the baby on this. So forgive me for trying to find a middle ground without, you know, violating too many parties on either side. So I'd look to our city attorney. Would it be possible to deny or approve, specifically target that lower right-hand window and say, "That's the one that needs to be addressed"?
Yes, I think so. Under our ordinances, city council in applying those standards has the ability to affirm, deny the appeal, or to modify the decision. So if you all have a modification to propose as a result of the appeal, I think you could.
I'd be interested to hear what my colleagues would say to that type of proposal.
I'd like to speak on that. I think my concern here is that it's not an issue of opinion of looks. Because I can agree with that, you know, we can all use our expert HGTV opinions and say, you know, "It doesn't look that different." But my issue here is the ethics of the issue, is that we have appointed the HPC members to do a job and that we owe it to them to uphold the rules of their job. That they have stated that this homeowner was given the guidelines. He was fully aware of the guidelines. He disobeyed the guidelines. He had opportunity to show the previous windows, did not do that, threw them out. So went around the rules. And as a mother, I, you know, don't like it when my kids went around the rules, and I still don't like when people go around the rules as adults. And this person did that, and it does set bad precedent. If we, as a council, want to discuss the rules and guidelines that the HPC has in place, and we think that there needs to be modifications to said rules because maybe they're too stringent and that they're therefore causing people to not invest in these historical homes... homes because of the cost and barriers that they may be causing, that's a fair conversation we can have. The discussion tonight is about someone that had a set of rules that everybody else in the historical section of town has to abide by, and he disregarded them. So I'm not, I'm not looking at the windows that look better or worse, or more original or not original. It's unfortunate that he spent the money and put them in. That's sad, because that's money that he spent that now he may have to spend again. So if we say, well, two windows can stay in, but one can't, or vice versa, that's really not the issue of the situation. It's the fact that he went around the rules. So that's where I am in the ethical dilemma of this situation, is do we give him a pass for going around the rules? So for that reason, I would not support reversing this decision. I would not support partially one window, three windows, two windows, because my issue lies with that he disregarded the guidelines that he was given and fully aware of. So that's what I would like to say. Any more discussion before we vote on the motion?
Counselor Helgeson?
I guess the issue really is that this is guidelines. And so guidelines, they're not rules, they're not, you know, mom said be home by 10, and it's 12:30. This is actually guidelines that say, hey, we'd like you to come home tonight. Well, I came home tonight. Just maybe not something that was liked as well as you would like it to be, so. And again, you know, when you're looking at people investing, you know, as the gentleman said, coming from Florida or Texas, he came from Florida? Florida. You know, when you look at some of these homes, it is interesting, when you go in the Historic District, that there are some of them that are just renovated beautifully. Others, they're like a crack house. And the next one is beautiful, million dollars, next one's $10. I mean, that isn't a good thing. As the gentleman stated, the neighbor directly across the street said, we need to encourage people to invest. We need to not be wagging our finger at them, saying, well, you didn't follow the way I wanted. They're investing their own money. So I appreciate this gentleman investing and trying to improve the neighborhood, so I do hope that you will support this, reversing the Historic Preservation Commission decision, and side with the property owner, and rather than making him take all these windows out and throw them away, so.
I will support reversing this decision, because I don't want to be in the business of financially punishing our property owners. Plain and simple. This is somebody that is investing in Lynchburg property, and guidelines are guidelines. They aren't ordinances, they aren't policies, they aren't laws. So I'll be siding with Counselor Member Helgeson and supporting his motion to reverse this.
Mr. Faraldi?
I thank counsel for the conversation. It's been enlightening, to say the least. I think this is one of the small P politics in local government, that there really just no is, there is no R versus D, independent versus conservative, versus, I think this is just so unique. From where I sit, I tried to, did try to split the baby, so I guess that wasn't a good path forward. With that being said, I think you could say you're supporting property owners by supporting the decision. Everyone else went through this process, sought approval, maybe it was denied, maybe it was approved, and then they allocated resources accordingly. You know, you're supporting everybody else who did it the right way, so I can see both sides. And so unless Counselor Member Taylor has anything to offer, I'd move the pending question and ask us to vote.
Okay. I agree, and I think either way, you're supporting homeowners, you're supporting, you know, people who've invested in their homes, that have bought the houses in the neighborhood. You're supporting people that have invested in their homes. I'm thankful that this man bought this home and has beautified it. I appreciate it. I'm sorry that he's, may have to replace the windows, that that's the direction this goes, but either way, let's go ahead and vote.
Just for clarity, if you're voting in favor, you're supporting...
Reversing the HPC's decision.
I just want everyone to be on the same page.
This vote is to, the motion was to reverse the decision of the HPC, so that's what we're voting on.
The motion fails, 2-5.
I make a motion to approve the original motion to accept the recommendation from the Historic Committee.
Your second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on that? Okay, let's go ahead and vote on the original motion to accept what the HPC voted on.
The motion passes, 5-2.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. The next section is public comment. During public comment, individual speakers have three minutes to speak, and those representing a group have five minutes to speak. Typically, City Council takes comments made during the public comment section of the agenda under advisement, and may refer concerns to the city manager for follow-up. Citizens often express conflicting and diverse positions regarding specific issues under consideration. To encourage citizen participation and to avoid intimidation to persons who may express sometimes unpopular opinions, applause, cheers, or jeers from the audience are not permitted. When appearing before City Council, citizens may not engage in behavior that intimidates or insults others, engage in disruptive behavior, use profanity or vulgar language, promote private business ventures, or campaign for office. We will now hear from a citizen regarding a matter, Mr. Kurt Deemer. Please state your name and locality of residence.
My name is Kurt Deemer, and I'm a Lynchburg citizen. Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, thank you for the opportunity. I would hope that we could spend at least as much time on taxes and returning money to the citizens as we do to bees and windows. Doesn't look like that's going to happen tonight, so I am disappointed. I'm going to speak about another important American liberty, the liberty of our people to keep their money that they earn. The Bible says the worker deserves his wages. I've learned that most of the great problems we face in our country are caused by politicians creating solutions to problems that they created in the first place. In the last City Council, had taken more, if the last City Council had taken taxes multiple years from us that they shouldn't have, and properly stewarded our city, you wouldn't be now talking about having to return it. I am glad you were talking about it. And I would like to publicly thank Councilman Helgeson, Ms. Gins, and Taylor for their leadership in fighting for real tax relief. But let's be honest, this new council has been going for 70 days now, and you were elected 126 days ago. I think it's time to do something. By my count, you've had over eight opportunities to remedy past surpluses and return our financial liberty, and you've had eight opportunities to lower future surpluses, taking from people, and give our citizens some real tax relief. We have been watching y'all, and we've been waiting patiently. Founders knew that a democracy would lead to some kind of tyranny. That is why the term democracy appears in none of our country's founding documents. Their vision for us was a republic based on limited government. That is not what the Bill of Rights is actually, a list of cannots for government. It is our hard-earned money that you are spending. Taking our money by the power of the gun is anti-liberty to start with. Don't think that is what you do? Have you seen what happens to citizens who fail to pay their taxes? So taxes are painful to start with, necessary, yes, but true Republicans, small Rs, know that limited taxes and limited government is a noble and honorable endeavor. Private charity is what our founders encouraged. So as you debate, I hope you will keep our founders' principles of liberty in mind. Deliberate the amount you're taxing, but always remember that it is not your money that you are taking, it is ours. We, the people, loaned you the power to tax or not to tax. Stewardship of our fair city is important. Governing justly is important. And when you leave office, I hope the citizens remember you for the fiscal austerity you practiced, and the love you showed us toward leaving our wallets alone, and their liberty more vibrant than you founded. Apostle Paul said, obey your leaders and submit to them, for they are keeping watch over you, and because they will have to give an account for what they did. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We now hear from a citizen regarding a matter, Mr. Trent Warner. Please state your name and locality of residence.
Hello, Madam Mayor, City Council. I'm Trent Warner. I live in Forest, moved there about nine months ago, but spent the previous nine years in Lynchburg. And first off, let me say, I love being here, and I love sitting there and listening to you guys. And just to let you know, every time one of you speaks, you sway me to your, the way you would vote. It's pretty awesome to be here and watch this. My brother called me about three, four years ago and said, hey, do you want to do what our grandfather did and buy some homes, some rental properties? And we have. And we have four units. So we're just, we're not a big rental company. We have four units. They're behind Lynchburg College or University of Lynchburg, and over towards Paramount. It's been great, just to give you an idea. Our four tenants that moved in, and we had no idea what we were doing, we just got into it, we're just a mom and pop. My brother would call me the mom, he's the pop. So our tenants, believe it or not, Georgia, Hawaii, one from Alaska did not, she did not move in, one from New York, and one from New Jersey. It's really, really cool, the people that we've met. And I just want to let you know what we've learned a little bit in this. There's four factors that come to rent. There's the mortgage, and we have a mortgage, it takes us 20 years to pay it off. There's insurance, there's taxes, and there's upkeep. We've had a tenant ask me if I could lower the rent, and I wish I could, the factors don't change. But hearing that you have a surplus initially means the formula, you took too much money, and it's our money. And I would like to be able to help our renters, and that's as simple as it gets. If we had more, we could upkeep more, and that's really what it is. And that's all I really had to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. We will now hear from a citizen regarding a matter, Mr. Greg Lester. Please state your name and locality of residence.
My name is Greg Lester, and I live out on 106 Watkins Place. I hadn't been there long enough to remember the address hardly. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council. I'm here this evening to request real estate tax relief, as others have spoken on, but to do it maybe a little different way, to discuss some of the benefits to the city that would follow. I'm a newcomer to the city, having grown up in Bedford County, on a dairy farm, running several businesses there, and partnering with two successful residential housing projects there. The Farmington and West Crossing subdivisions are now around 800 homes, and add about one-third of a billion dollars taxable real estate to Bedford County. How did this happen, and what caused that kind of growth in the county? Well, I would suggest to you that the disparity in the tax rate was a significant influencer of where people wanted to invest their resources. The city was at $1.05 at the time, while Bedford County has practiced equalization for many years, which has maintained their tax rate around 50 cents per hundred. Unfortunately, Lynchburg's tax rate increased to $1.11 in 2013, while Bedford County's stayed at 50 cents, and will likely drop into the 40s after the current reassessment. With local, state, and national home shortages, home prices have shot up, and assessments skyrocketed. If the city really wants to encourage citizens to invest here and buy and build homes here, you must make a strong effort to get real estate taxes more in line with your competition. And that's how it goes. Reducing taxes on real estate is not just benefiting homeowners, as I've heard mentioned. And as Mr. Warner just stated, every person that lives in the city is paying those taxes either directly to the city or through their landlord, because these taxes are most certainly added to the rent that they are paying. And people move to more favorably governed and lower taxed areas, look at California and New York, moving to Texas and Florida right now. And Lynchburg's lost a lot of citizens to the counties over the years over these tax situations. One of Governor Youngkin's primary initiatives for the Commonwealth is called Make Virginia Home, and Keep Virginians in Virginia. Well, I think likewise, the city needs to make Lynchburg home and not lose our residents to the counties. For sure, the city offers more services, and they cost more, but at what cost to the long-term financial health and growth? Refocusing on the city's core responsibilities can help you make better choices and avoid financial pitfalls that accompany more, bigger, and better amenities. Fiscal responsibility is a very large part of what you, the City Council, is charged with. To wisely use the taxes collected to meet the needs of the citizenry...
Thank you, Mr. Lester.
...and to provide for the city to expand its tax base by encouraging future growth. Remember, growing your tax base allows you to lower your tax rate.
Thank you, Mr. Lester, so much. I appreciate it. Okay. Hear from a citizen regarding a matter, Ms. Angie Deemer. Please state your name and locality of residence.
Angie Deemer, 105 Pago Street. Good evening. I'm here tonight to ask you once and for all, we hope, to make a decision on tax relief. For the citizens of Lynchburg, I want to remind you that we have not forgotten the promises that were made and the promises that haven't been kept. This has gone on way too long, which seems like an attempt to ignore and not resolve. I wonder if each of you on City Council pay real estate taxes. I wonder if you pay personal property taxes. I feel like these taxes are a big deal to me and others, but it doesn't really seem that it's a concern or care to you. The citizens are tired of excuses and want to see movement. Not movement from the city manager, but movement for tax, not tax breaks, but movement from you on City Council. You are the one that were elected by the people. You need to support the citizens. A few years ago, Mr. Faraldi, I remember meeting you. You were very humble and sincere. You met with my husband and I and a group of friends to get our support for you to run for City Council. We all supported you. My husband even took you to meet my mom, which is in your ward, and has many widowed friends. They all voted for you. They all supported you. They believed in you, and so did we. I'm standing here tonight for my 83-year-old mom and her friends that could use that surplus to help offset the increased cost of living. I'm asking you to do the right thing. I also hope that you will take a minute to remember how each of you got your position on City Council. Lastly, I would like to thank Marty, Jeff, and Larry for your diligence and your compassion and your unwavering regard for the citizens of Lynchburg. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We'll now hear from a citizen regarding a matter, Mr. Gary Woodson. Please state your name and locality of residence.
Madam Mayor and City Council, I'd like to thank you for seeing, for me, allowing me to speak tonight. My name's Gary Woodson, live on Gatlin Street. I'm a resident of the city for 51 years. I've owned a home there for 44 years, and this is about the tax relief that the citizens need. Back on March 5th of 2020, during a city-sponsored meeting in this room, I brought up a question. I said, why are the neighboring counties have such a disparity in the tax rates that they pay? And I also, at the time, I said, well, let's take a city that has the same demographics as we have here in Lynchburg, Virginia, College Town, Harrisonburg, Virginia, and they are, at the time, they were in the 80s, actually, they were at 88 cents per hundred at Harrisonburg, Virginia, at that time, and we were at $1.11. So at that time, a senior manager of the city of Lynchburg told me, well, the reason that Harrisonburg can have a much lower rate than we have is that they actually own the public utility company. So that was said there. So at that particular time, we were at $1.11, and I think some members of City Council were considering even moving that even higher. So let's fast forward today. Camel County has a 52, Bedford is at 50, Appomattox 49, Amherst at 50... Camel County has a 52, Bedford is at 50, Appomattox 49, Amherst at 51, Harrisonburg, Virginia has just moved up to 93, talking about today, another city, Charlottesville is at 96. Rona City today is 92 cents per hundred. Lynchburg was still at $1.11. We need relief. Now, let's take a look at two buckets of revenue that I think that we could add to that to lower our costs. One, in a recent budget meeting, a few weeks back, we talked about, I didn't talk about, it was said that the city used to sell a lot of water. We used to sell a lot of water to the counties and to a lot of the businesses we had here. So I think we should take advantage of this by growing some businesses. Appreciate Marty's comment a few minutes ago, that how many jobs does this, does this project develop? We look at Augusta County and Rockingham County, they've added thousands of jobs in the last two years, but we see here in Lynchburg, Master Brands leaving, Tritec leaving, R. Donnelly leaving, Cedric Inc. leaving, the Sony Erickson building at Iver Creek is just now nothing more than just a warehouse. Wexco leaving, Jenworth, Craddock and Terry, G and B Barrettville, all of these are businesses that have left Lynchburg. So let's take advantage and help our citizens, the most valuable part we have here. Let's create some jobs and create some revenue to help offset the costs that we have with the higher taxes that we have. But again, thank you so much for the time tonight. I'd like to thank you for allowing me to speak. And our policeman over here, last City Council meeting, the policeman was, he worked here, lived here, I love it. This gentleman right here works here, lives here, I love it. We need to have more people that-
Thank you.
-take their money and keep it right here in the city. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Woodson. Okay. We will now hear from a citizen regarding a matter, Mr. Peter Sepharati. Please state your name and locality of residence.
Hello, I'm Peter Sepharati. I live out in Trent's Ferry Road in the city of Lynchburg. And good evening, City Council members and staff. Thanks for the opportunity to speak to you on the issue of real estate tax relief, or as I call it, rebating accumulated surpluses. I think this process should be handled, by the way, separately from reducing other fees and taxes, which I think is probably also a good idea. Now, I looked at the February 10th Agenda Packet, and I saw Slide 16, which shows that the surplus tax revenue for fiscal year 2013 through 2022 was about $47 million. The people of Lynchburg, I believe, need reliable numbers so we can understand the scope of the past and current overtaxation and figure out what to do about it, or what to expect. Now, we should know how much of this $47 million is excess real estate taxation, because there could have been other taxes that are building up too. What's the current fiscal year real estate tax surplus? What is the estimate of the final 2023 fiscal year tax surplus going to be? And what is the current balance of the unassigned fund which holds the surpluses, as I was told? So I asked that the City Council, first of all, request and publish a public report of this information for the benefit of the people of Lynchburg. I think it would be very helpful, and I think we deserve to know it. Some of you, Council members, began the 2023 sessions ready to act on immediate tax relief. Other Council members seem hesitant or unwilling to act on this matter. And your reasons for this are unclear to many of the folks who elected you. It seems to me like it might be due to uncertainty about how to proceed prudently, which I understand, and I hope it's not due to opposition to the idea of an immediate tax rebate. So how would you get this done? Perhaps those of you on the fence about immediate tax relief need a workable plan to get the ball rolling. So here's an example of one. Number one, determine the reasonable estimate of the surplus real estate tax receipts for fiscal year 2023. Number two, decide on a percentage of that surplus to return to the taxpayers, let's say 80%, and then calculate the gross rebate. Number three, recalculate a new tax rate, which delivers the desired rebate to the people. Number four, recalculate the taxes due on each parcel. Now, I realize that this particular item is not a trivial task, but I have faith in the staff and the IT department to make that happen in a timely manner. And then five, mail amended tax bills for the reduced May payments. Now, that's just my plan, you might have a better one, but I think it is an outline of how to get this done. This city has the resources to get this rebates done, and I have no doubt that we could manage to raise taxes in this way if it were necessary. And I urge you to show the public that you can put in place a tax rebate process that will meet the expectations which the recent election set. Some may say we can't take a chance on rebating too much surplus-
Thank you, yes.
...leaving the city with excess surplus.
Peter, if you just want to say, Madam Mayor, if we could buy consent, allow, Mr. Sepharati, I need to finish with-
Yeah, just give me 15 seconds.
I was gonna ask for 30 seconds, if possible.
I don't need to.
That's fine.
Some may say that maybe we can't take a chance on rebating too much of a surplus and leaving the city in a financial bind, but according to the numbers I'm seeing, there would be a large surplus fund still sitting there in case there's an emergency. So let's get to work on getting this tax rebate done. Please have the will to move ahead with immediate tax rebates. And I want to thank you for your attention and for your service to the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sepharati. Okay, moving on. Hear from a citizen regarding a matter, Mr. Kirsch. We added him at the beginning of the meeting. Take your time, I know how you feel.
It's not easy.
I understand.
It's not easy getting a hold.
Please state your name and locality of residence.
Yes, Martin Kirsch, 102 Jonathan's Landing here in Lynchburg. Madam Mayor, Council members, before I even start, I want to thank Alicia and Matt for helping me get on the agenda tonight, and Ms. Mayron. I'm the president of the Villas at Stonemil Homeowners Association. The Villas is a 62-home gated community on Breezewood Drive, and that's what I want to talk about. I've been asked by the homeowners, who are all seniors, okay, every one of our homeowners today, due to the gated community, most of them are older than I am, so, you know, I just want to point that out. We've been, I've been asked, like I said, to bring to your attention the condition of Breezewood Drive. It's a two-lane road, and in less than a mile, there are 100, I'm sorry, 359 households. That includes the new apartments, modern, other apartments, there are townhouses, single-family homes. There are two churches on our road. There's a funeral home on our road. There, I would say, this road has been, I've been here since 2009, and I love every minute of it, I gotta tell you. But the road has been patched and overpatched and overpatched. It's a narrow road. It needs help. The only thing that has been done in the last few years was they painted a center line showing where the road separates. I don't know of any dead-end street with this many homeowners, or homeowners or households in that condition. We, I would say there'd be up to 700 vehicles traveling this road on a daily basis, having to avoid joggers, walkers, cyclists. There are no sidewalks. The road is narrow. Last we heard, the upgrades were due in like 22, 23, when I spoke to, I'm sorry, I forgot his name. It was now pushed out to 2027. That's ridiculous. It really is. They keep putting this off. It's been pulled off at least twice. We've all heard of funds allocated from DC, from the Commonwealth, for infrastructure purposes, and I hope the city can come up with some of the money to upgrade Breezewood before 2027. It really needs it. It's a terrible, terrible road. The plans are already, they've been planning this, like I said, for a while, okay?
Thank you.
And the plans are there, showing that some widening, I think, and sidewalks-
Thank you, Mr. Kirsch.
-which are really needed.
I appreciate that.
Thank you very much for listening to me.
Thank you so much. Okay, the next section is general business. This section includes general items of new business. Moving on to fiscal year 2024 budget presentation, staff will provide a brief summary of the requests. Mr. Bendah.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council. Good evening. August 2nd, 2021, I started work here as Lynchburg City Manager and have counted my family, and I am blessed ever since. For just over a year and a half, I've worked with you and this community to make Lynchburg even better. Last year's fiscal 2023 budget message, "To be the Lynchburg of tomorrow, we must make investments today," still rings true for me and hopefully you. And with that said, we cannot overlook the fact that nearly half of the City Council are new. Mayor Reed, City Council members Taylor and Missions, again, congratulations and welcome to Team Lynchburg. For each of you, there are many, many firsts in serving the public, the most immediate of which is working together with your peers, our residents, the city workforce, and me to adopt the fiscal 2024 budget. To that end, under local charter, I, as city manager, am called upon to act as Budget Commissioner, and as such, to prepare and submit to council the annual budget after receiving estimates made by the heads or directors of departments, or of any boards or commissions not within those departments. This recount of what the charter says begs the question of what I've done today in preparation to stand before you tonight and propose the fiscal 2024 budget. This year, like last, Donna Witt, the city's Chief Financial Officer and GOAT, greatest of all time, and her, and her staff sent city appointees, constitutional officers, and city department heads budget guidelines by which to submit their proposals. We ask those proposals account for inflation, and if an increase or enhancement is requested, to then tie it to a known city priority. Those agreed to city priorities for those watching at home or here in City Council chambers are the following: public safety, infrastructure, economic development, lifelong learning, and quality of life. As such, we sent the fiscal 2024 budget instructions to all city appointees, constitutional officers, and city departments in the fall of 2022, and met with all of them one-on-one in the winter of 2022. So as to better understand each, my takeaway this year and last, Team Lynchburg does great work, oftentimes in overtime, without all of the resources necessary to provide the expected municipal services. Remembering last year's budget message and thinking through the one for this year with a nearly new City Council, I offer the following message: Moving Lynchburg Forward. Undoubtedly to a member on this dais, a person seated in these chambers, someone employed by this municipal corporation, and/or resident tuning in from home who lives in the city, we agree that we must be about moving Lynchburg forward. How do we do so? This past February, we held a budget retreat where Greg walked us through a couple presentations that asked questions like, what are core city services? And we also highlighted, and he also highlighted to us the distinct differences between a city and a county, and the services that each provide their residents. And just before lunch that day, we scheduled the city assessor's, Jeff Bandi's, presentation on the city's biannual reassessment process. Here in Lynchburg, every two years, the city assessor reassesses property values. If you haven't been here, meaning traveling in space, this is a shout-out to fellow Lynchburger and hero of mine and many Leland Melvin, you may not have heard that extremely low lending rates, high demand, and low supply caused an unprecedented housing market, not simply here in Lynchburg, but across the country. Many of you have probably received your reassessment notices and have said to yourselves, yikes! Yes, on average, housing assessments are up 25% across the city. Why? Well, back again to long-understood economic principles of low supply, high demand, and then your neighbor. Yes, your neighbor, he, she, they figured out by doing very little to enhance their existing home, could position it for sale with potentially no home inspection because the eager purchaser was paying cash, and the deal involved pay escalators that pushed other purchasers who needed bank financing out of competition, which resulted in a bargain for exchanged, known as a sale, that created a comparable or a comp in many of your neighborhoods that may have not seen sales in a while. If you remember, at the retreat, Jeff showed you homes in several different Lynchburg neighborhoods that were bought in 2019. The owners did, then did absolutely nothing to it, and then sold it in 2022 for as much as a 70% increase. Howdy, neighbor. In the coming weeks, we will engage one another and the public about the city's real estate rate that, under Virginia Code, requires a public hearing to set it, which will be held on Tuesday, April 4th. Ahead of these opportunities, it might be helpful to include here some context and history on our real estate rate. First, if we look back at the history of our real estate tax rate over the last 40 years, the average reassessment growth annually has just been shy of 5%, 4.79. During that time, we've had two periods where the rate diverged from about where we are now at $1.11. In the early 90s, the rate went from $1.12 to $1.18 before coming back down to $1.11 in the late 90s. Then in 2008, the rate dropped from $1.11 to $1.05 before returning to $1.11 in 2013 after the Great Recession, where it has remained until today. A quick aside here, reflecting on the reduction of the real estate rate in 2008 and its increase in 2013 had an immediate impact, where city employees were furloughed in 2009, and in the subsequent 10-plus years, at least six of those years, the workforce received no general wage increase. Make no mistake, cities like Lynchburg need consistent growth in real estate values and revenue to keep up with the inflationary costs of providing city services, both personnel and non-personnel. It's been 11 years since we last raised, raised the real estate tax rate in FY 2013 back to $1.11. During that time, and including this year's 21% growth, we have seen reassessment growth on average of only 4.05%. That's less than our average of 4.81% over the last 40 years. The large increases of the last two reassessments are clouding the low growth we saw in the years prior to it. This is just a little context. And now, I'd like to walk you through my proposed fiscal 2024 budget. Again, the prospect, or I would say, moving Lynchburg forward. I provide here a list or table of the different funds and the total plan. This is, this is a shout-out to Donna and Greg, who love this graph. And then proposing certain budget highlights. Nothing terribly exciting about the first bullet, but it's expected, under Virginia Code, that I propose a budget where ongoing revenues meet ongoing expenditures. You asked upon my arrival a year and a half ago to ensure that we strengthen Lynchburg's ability to provide expected everyday municipal services. That requires resources. And then looking at the workforce and its overall expectation to meet at least or come close to inflation, I'm proposing for the workforce a general wage increase of 5%. There, also recognizing revenues, they have been talked about, that they are more than what we have seen in many years, I am offering a reduction in the real estate rate to $1.05. And you can see the number there. So a penny, for those tuning in, council already knows, a penny on the real estate is $750,000. Those are fiscal 2024 budget highlights. Further highlights, I heard from you creative and meaningful tax relief for residents and businesses. Last week, you took the action with a personal property tax relief, which was about 35,000 vehicles, and on average, that's about $60 a vehicle. And then, what I've also understood of import for each of you is a proper investment in public safety. So in looking at tax relief, I propose a waiver of two fees, one being the refuse collection fee for two years, and the other being the motor vehicle license fee for a year. Those values, added together with a reduction in the real estate rate, for a household whose house is assessed at $200,000, has a motor vehicle, is about $330. And understand that relief and reduction of a rate are two different separate things. I'm just putting together as far as numbers. Turning to our priorities and reminding you each of them. Public safety. Making Lynchburg safer. For the Lynchburg Police Department, we will do so by enhancing capacity to provide public safety services. We're proposing a take-home vehicle program that would involve 10 vehicles for officers residing in the city. These are impactful components that sit outside- city. These are impactful components that sit outside someone's house and that they then can be an active deterrent or something more for folks, and as well for the officer, he or she, it's an amenity in a overall compensation package because that usually turns out to be about a savings in $10,000 for that officer. Then you can see the addition of 15 positions, and you may ask, Mr. Bendah, we know that we're having trouble filling the positions that we currently had, why are we adding more? Many or most of these positions will afford the officers that should be out policing, that are currently doing some of these, what I'd call administrative functions, to be out instead of in. And in the normal course of anyone fiscally looking at the replacement of seven vehicles to modernize the fleet. Turning then to the Lynchburg Fire Department. Expanding fire service and improving firefighter recruitment and retention. Last year in the budget, we raised both starting salaries for the Lynchburg Police Department to the highest in central Virginia. We did the same for the Fire Department. A promise then that we talked through was a pay progression plan, and also to a pay progression plan and how to impact compression. It was the same conversation that was being held with the Police Department that was asked to be held with the Fire Department. We have done so. We have ensured that the two plans together are competitive and that they are, to the degree that we can make them as equal as possible, we have. And in so doing, I think it's going to help immensely with recruitment and retention in our Fire Department. Earlier today, you heard about a public-private partnership with Liberty University to construct a fire station. The opportunity there is to help with a city that, by way of audit, recognize annually that an addition of a new fire station's necessary. One way in which to do so is to help leverage the capital needs that maybe we don't currently have in our capital improvement program or priority to be able to do so. This will require the addition of nine firefighters. We are looking at grants to help pay for those. That was in the earlier conversation. And then you can see there's some equipment and also some apparatus that are necessary to move Lynchburg Fire Department forward. Continuing on public safety, looking at the Department of Emergency Services, improving 911 call taker recruitment and retention. We currently carry quite a few vacancies there. It is a tough job to hold. It requires a tremendous amount of training. There are different shifts that have impactful, stressful components to it. And candidly, if you can make $20 at Hobby Lobby doing something a little bit less stressful, you may take it. But by going to 2150, we become the highest in the area and be able to recruit better to fill those positions. And then thinking about public safety and whether the broad expanse that it looks at, you'd be remiss not to look at improving cybersecurity. We currently have one person looking at that, and if you've paid attention, you've seen kind of the impact of hacking that it's done to Baltimore and Atlanta and bigger cities. We don't want that to happen here. Again, under public safety, we have what I call kith and kin, or state constitutional officers that help with the adjudication of crimes and also the processing of them. I'm a big advocate of the state doing what it should to help properly resource these different offices, and realistically, the state hasn't done as much as it should. And over the years, Lynchburg has stepped up and helped ensure that, to the degree needed, that we have helped supplement it. So in this fiscal year 2024 budget, I'm proposing adding two city-funded sheriffs positions to the sheriff's office, bringing that total to six, adding a locally-funded Assistant Commonwealth Attorney, bringing the total funded positions to three in her office, and then for the Clerk of Court, addition of local support for narrowly employee, bringing the total city-funded positions to two. Turning to infrastructure and improving our built environment. Donna, for the last two work sessions, have engaged you in our capital improvement program. The number is there. And looking at how best to ensure that we can maintain and upkeep those different opportunities, we're proposing employees to help with cleanliness and maintenance, and also a civil engineer because the projects are as many and as impactful as they are. So we have to get these projects through. We have three civil engineers, and as an addition of another is of import for us. Infrastructure is also water. And you may say, "Hey, Winter, you increased water rates last year. What's the news here?" Well, in looking at our sewer, understand that we're under a consent order for at least a number of other years. And so there's a federal expectation, there's a formula that we have to abide by, so we have to meet that. Tim will talk to you on March 21st about rates and what they involve, but you can see, just as expenses associated with gas and other things that have gone up, expenses associated with his operation have as well. And for those that are wondering, water is an enterprise where ongoing revenues has to meet ongoing expenses, and so Tim annually has to look at the best way in which to do so. Under lifelong learning, paying teachers more. I'm proposing that we increase the operating support to Lynchburg City Schools with an additional $3 million. Understand, 2.1 of that $3 million goes to the state senate and the state house recommended at least a 5% increase to teacher pay. Our portion of that is 2.1 million. The $900,000 left over, Dr. Edwards has talked to us about this 50 and 15 that could go towards helping to implement that program. Economic development, recruiting, retaining businesses. What you see proposed here and listed here are things that we do annually to ensure that we can retain and recruit businesses. What I'd offer is, in thinking about Marjette and the complement of people that she has, she does special events, she has museums, she has tourism, and she also has development. So taking an FTE, making sure that that person is strictly focused on business recruitment and retention. And then also, five years ago, we performed a review of our economic strategy. I'm suggesting that in those five years, I don't know whether or not you heard about it, or it happened around where you were living, but there's a thing called COVID-19. And what we found in that that has really changed the way that we do business. You can visit Pack Life. Pack Life, that I think was teeming with workers and employees anymore, isn't that way because many big businesses that have people in commercial space have decided that they can work from home, and that's less overhead that they have to pay. And then looking at quality of life, building a stronger community. There is an implement of improvements in Paramount College and Heritage Parks, and then totaling the amount in the CIP that we're investing in parks and trails is 1.7 million. And then we've talked about a housing toolkit. We had Kent White, who a couple months ago explained to us kind of where our city was going, and we were making reviews of different neighborhoods, and he offered that, under state code, there were certain elements or aspects that could help us make sure that we follow up. I think we heard about some, we saw some places, we saw some building, we've talked about some neighborhoods. I know that with talking with Dr. Wilder, talk about the presidential streets that are not so presidential. We understand that in there, in 39 blocks, there are 40 houses that are derelict. So 10% of that housing stock is derelict. And so, in looking at, including more code enforcement, and then also, we've talked to Sarah Corin Toto and Kent White at a retreat about a housing trust fund. I'm suggesting a one-time investment of $250,000 as seed funding that would hopefully attract, hopefully attract private investment to help with the conversations that we've had about affordable or single-family residential or other kind of housing. So with that, in proposing the fiscal 2024 budget, I propose moving Lynchburg forward by making Lynchburg safer, by improving built environment, by paying teachers more, by recruiting retaining businesses, and by building a stronger community. Looking ahead, the budget calendar is proposed. We are currently on March 14th. I am proposing. The next three days, I will participate in what's called Budget and Brews. Brew is more than just simply something more spirited. It can be coffee. So I'll be at Iron and Ale tomorrow at 6:00 to 7:00, Diamond Hill Baptist Church on Thursday from 6:00 to 7:00, and then Vow's Kitchen, I believe it's called, from 6:00 to 7:00 on Friday. After which, our first budget reconciliation where we, and don't get too excited, your big budget books are waiting for you just outside chambers. We've given those, and so on. The 21st, we'll have our first budget reconciliation. And also, at the time, Tim Mitchell, our Utilities Services Director, will engage you about the Water Resources Rate Briefing. Then the 28th, we have a joint meeting with Lynchburg City Schools. April 4th, I think Vice Mayor Faraldi mentioned, the different hearings. We have the proposed real estate, the Water Resources Rate, and also the budget. And then if need be, and as needed, the 11th, the 18th, and 25th are further budget reconciliations. And then pursuant to Virginia Code, we have to adopt the fiscal year budget 30 days decide of the end of the fiscal year, which is June 30. So the first reading would be May 9th, the second reading, May 23rd. With that, Madam Mayor, that is my budget.
Thank you, Mr. Bendah. Councilman Hellgassen?
You know, I know we sat through this, but we've just listened to citizen after citizen talk about the $43 million surplus, only to now see in the new budget, another $10 million real estate tax increase. We have meeting after meeting prepared ahead of time. We're night and day difference. I mean, the last thing we can do, I mean, as far as from meaningful tax relief as I've ever seen, is a $10 million tax increase. So I hope we can actually not spend lots of time these next few weeks kind of looking at different things, other than if the city manager can come with a $10 million reduction rather than another $10 million burden on the backs of our taxpayers. We're going to be spending a lot of time over these next few weeks. I wish we would have had a budget that didn't increase the burden on our citizens. I know our tax equalization rate is required to be advertised at 92 cents. Anything above 92 cents is a tax raise. This goes up to $1.05. That's 13 cents, which is about $10 million bucks. This is a non-starter for me.
Vice Mayor Faraldi?
Councilman Hellgassen, you're wrong. Needs to be more like 12 million. And I'm serious.
Absolutely.
And the reason being is because we, through the last budget, reduced it to $1.09. So for the fiscal year 2023, we actually operated with $1.09 as the real estate tax rate through a variance of a credit. And so I would humbly submit that if we were to operate with fiscal year 2023 real estate revenue, the approximate rate wouldn't be 92. It'd actually be more like 90 or 89. Now, look, there's a lot of good stuff in this. The core responsibility of government, I believe, is to keep that jurisdiction safe. And so there's a lot in this that I really want to figure out ways to do. I want to pay teachers more. I think there's a way we can do that with the existing funds in Lynchburg City Schools, to get those funds to the classroom as opposed to more administrative burden. And I've indicated I'm willing to allocate by category to accomplish that. But, thank you for the tongue-in-cheek, but candidly, you know, I don't, I don't believe it's 10 million. It's probably more like 12 because of what we did in fiscal year 23. I'm not thrilled with the notion of utilizing $1.05 as a selling point for the tax relief conversation. I don't think it should be included whatsoever. That is still a tax increase and should be taken right off that slide. And I think in this economy, even though those who agree that something needs to happen, and we have different perspectives of how to get there, it's not going to be $1.05. It's not going to be 95. I'll be shocked if it's 92. And candidly, I'm a little disappointed that, after all the conversations we've had leading up to this point, that this is how it was sold to the community. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilman Missions?
I could easily echo what our Vice Mayor and Councilmember Hellgassen have said because I really appreciated both of their comments. And, you know, we've had some dialogue going back and forth over the last couple of days, Vice Mayor and myself. And personally, I would like to see us get closer to 85 cents. And the reason for that is, over the last several years, we've seen a lot of money come in from all of this pandemic funding, and that's drying up. And we need to return back to the pre-pandemic level of funding. We just had the 16th-largest bank in the nation collapse over the weekend. I worked for the city when that happened in 2008, and they couldn't tighten the belt fast enough. So I think the time to tighten the belt is now, and we need to put our citizens first, and we need to put this money back in our citizens' wallets and get this tax rate down. I really don't appreciate selling $1.05 as tax relief. It may be rate relief, but it is a massive tax increase, $10 million. And I know, I've talked to my neighbors about it, talked to people all around the city about it, and they're ready for real relief. They don't want to pay more in real estate taxes. It's high enough. It shouldn't be more expensive year after year to live in Lynchburg. We should be trying to find savings. I know we had a gentleman here from Stone Mill earlier, and I didn't look particularly at the villas on Jonathan's Landing, although I'm very familiar with them, but I did look at the reassessment on the apartment complex, and it is a 33% increase. And I'm sure the villas are probably 30-plus percent also. We've got senior citizens living in there on fixed incomes, you know, trying to get by on social security and whatever else is there. And we've got to think about them. We've got to put them first because things are getting harder and harder to afford. If we move forward with a rate like that, which I know we won't, then we're going to be basically pricing people out of an already challenging affordable housing market in our city because rent is going to go up across the city. So I appreciate the position our Vice Mayor is taking. I appreciate the position Councilmember Hellgassen is taking. I'm going to be trying to fight to see if we can get this down to 85 cents. That's where I'm at. And that's really all I have to say.
Yes, I forced my opinion the other day for 88 cent on the dollar. I had a customer, she just bought a house on Peakland Place, moving here from Maryland. Her assessment came out 50% above what she paid for it a year ago. And she asked me today, she said, "Larry, do they want me to stay here?" This is a newbie. So I'll be supporting lower taxes. I ran on bringing it back to the people. We're going to bring it back to the people.
Councilwoman Dolan?
Yeah, like, I think we need to do something. But 85 cents, I mean, 85 cents, you may as well just throw that plant out the window. I think we're not even talking status quo. We're talking less than status quo at 85 cents. I just don't know how, do we think that the city services are immune from inflation? I mean, we still have, you know, the same expenses are higher than everybody else. I just think it is unreasonable to think about 85 cents. I think we need to be a little bit more responsible with what we're doing here, whether or not, you know, everybody says, and all the reading that I'm reading about the prices of homes, this is an artificial inflation as far as these homes are concerned. And what happens two years from today when they plummet? And they're already starting to level off and go down. So I'm not sure what the city is going to do in that respect. I think we're going to find ourselves probably in worse condition than we did in 2008, '09, '10. I could never support 85 cents. I could support something, but it's not going to be that.
Dr. Wilder?
Yes, thank you for your presentation. Thank you for your budget reductions. Thank you for looking after the city. You know, when I was talking to some residents in Diamond Hill at the neighborhood meeting, everybody wants certain things. They want the roads fixed. They wanted better lighting. They wanted this. They wanted that. But one thing we got to realize, everything you might want is going to come with a cost. You might say you want more streets, more sidewalks, more paving here, but that's going to come with a cost. And we got to weigh all those factors. So I'm looking at the budget. I see a reduction in tax rate from $1.11 to $1.05. I see a reduction in personal property tax. I see a waiver of refuse collections of $5.4 million. I see a waiver of motor vehicle license fees for a year of 1.5 million. So in my, you know, we all have different lens. Mine are very thick. When I look at the lens here, I see a reduction in taxes to our citizens. I see things they ask you to do. You have done that. So I commend you for doing that. But we got, as citizens of Lynchburg, as a member of America, citizens of Lynchburg, we got to ask ourselves, what kind of city do we want to live in? The staff members of our city need a raise. I mean, if you want, I want Jubilee Center, I want a raise. You want to work all year? We can't tell our staff members in the city of Lynchburg to work hard, to survive COVID, to survive this and survive that, and continue to show up. They want to be compensated equally, properly. So he's recommending a 5% increase in our city staff. So we, he's recommending a 5% increase in our city staff members, which they do that plus more. And as, as Counselment Dole has said, services have gone up. So we want to make sure our city staff is taken care of properly. We're in the process of building a new police station, building a new fire station, and various other things that are going on in our city. We want to make sure our city continues to grow, that persons want to come here and say, I like the lifestyle, I like the parks, I like the amenities of a lifestyle of this community. In order for us to do that, it's going to take a cost. In order for revitalization of neighborhoods, it's going to take a cost for our school system to get quality teachers. If you have a set in the classroom, it is challenging being a teacher. We need to pay our teachers more. If not, they're going to leave here and go somewhere else. So those things come with a cost. If you want quality education, you got to pay a quality salary to keep teachers here in our community. So you have to weigh the consequences of this versus the consequences of that. And I support a nice lifestyle of our community, where we have parks, where we have recreation, where we have streets that are paved, where we can have trash collection. I don't have to worry about my trash being collected. Counties, they don't, they have to pay for that. We have free trash collection and bulk pickup. We have a police department here in Lynchburg, where counties do not have a police department. So there's so many amenities that we are blessed with in our community that are not in the counties. They have to come always from Bedford or force away other places to come to the beautiful hospital that we have here in Lynchburg, in this facility. So we've got to weigh the consequences of our community and how we want our community to thrive. We've seen growth in our city, over 20-plus, 20,000 persons, now about 80-some thousand people. Our city continues to grow. In order to continue to grow, we got to make sure we continue to do that, where persons, like if you come to Liberty, I want to stay in Lynchburg because they have the things that are attractive to me. They have a nice downtown. They have different things that I like in a city. So if you want to attract people to stay here and businesses to want to relocate here, we got to have pad-ready sites that they want to come to and say, yes, this is a city that's growing, not this is a city that's stagnant, not this is a city that's going down, but a city that is prospering, a city that is growing, so we can continue to make investments in our city, so people want to come and move here. If we have a dying city, there's no investment and going backwards, businesses are going to leave like, oh, no what? And they're not going to live here, and those college kids are going to say, I don't want to come to Lynchburg because nothing's going on. We had a great presentation by the, by the Downtown Committee earlier today, talk about all the great things, all the investments that are going on. There's a new townhouse condo development at the lower end of Main Street. Growing up in Lynchburg, that place was horrible, but I have seen the investment in that structure today, because of the investment that this council and others have made in our city. As a Lynchburg resident, I want to see our city continue to grow. I want to see us continue to make investments, to make our lifestyles better, that people want to continue to move to Lynchburg and stay in Lynchburg. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselman Helgason.
Just real quick, you know, we heard from Mr. Lester earlier today, and he talked about how Forest used to be. Forest used to be, I think he had, I used to dove hunt out there. Used to be a lot of empty fields, nothing but cows. Now there's half a third or half a billion dollars worth of homes that just went up recently. You look at the biggest Kroger that's happened out there. Every time we raise real estate taxes in Lynchburg, we get the money short term, but not long term. Every time we raise taxes, the people in Bedford County, the Board of Supervisors are clapping their hands, saying, hallelujah, we got more people of means that are coming out here. We got more people that are going to be investing in Lynch, in Forest. And you watch, you look at that place 20 years ago, 25 years ago compared to today? That's, I think, what was stated about leaving California and going to Florida. Well, what's happening is folks with means in Lynchburg have moved to Jeff, to the Forest area. You look at their school system, much better than what's happened down in Lynchburg, even though it's a fraction of the cost. You look at out there, the values of homes that have shot up, because they're going to be competitive, and we need to be competitive. We can't just keep turning around and saying, oh, let's tax our citizens another $10 million and, and don't expect negative consequences, and that's what happens. It's happened for the last 20 years, and we can stop that now. I appreciate your passion, Counselmember Wilder, but the fact of the matter is, what we've done is we've actually incentivized folks to go to Forest. Let's lower the burden and incentivize people to stay in Lynchburg. Let's do that for a change. Let's make Lynchburg fantastic. We can do that. We don't do it by just saying, hey, let's raise taxes every chance we get and sell it as a tax reduction. Let's actually lower the burden on our citizens. And this needs to happen, it should have happened, and hopefully we, it can still make it happen for this current year with the $43 million surplus last year. But good night, we've got to do that coming up in this next budget. This budget has nothing to do with any kind of tax relief in it, and it's going to be based on the volunteers up here having to spend the next three, four months trying to figure out how to undo all this spending and give it back to our citizens. We hire professionals that come in and say, that should come in and say, we're going to do what you said. That's not increase the tax burden, that's actually lowering the burden. Very disappointed that this is what we're going to be up against the next several months. But my goodness, we cannot raise the burden on our citizens anymore, otherwise Forest is going to be just clapping and having a hallelujah chorus.
Well, I'm going to be your positive Patty tonight, because some of our speakers earlier talked about promises people made, and I don't know what other promises people up here made, but I know the only promises I made when I was campaigning, and what was that winter?
Public safety.
Public safety. What was the first conversation you and I had?
Exactly about that.
Public safety. The first thing I asked, and the first thing I told you, I said, I'm going to go toe-to-toe with you on public safety, because I said that was the number one concern everybody that I talked to the whole summer shared in every part of the city. The one, number one commonality, when I would mention the three things I ran on, which were public safety, schools, and economy, the one thing everybody agreed on, regardless of zip code, was public safety. Everybody was concerned about the safety of themselves or families, our law enforcement officials. So you knocked it out of the park with our public safety piece of this budget, and I'm very grateful for that, because our law enforcement community needed all of that, and I made promises to them that I would do everything that I could to deliver those essentials, because if they don't have those pieces, then our city will continue to suffer the increase in crime that we're seeing because of the vulnerabilities that they have. And, and then they become unsafe. Those law enforcement officials that protect us become unsafe themselves. So I think you did an awesome job with the public safety component, and the reality that our taxpayers have to understand, and I want them to consider, is that, that costs us money. It's the taxpayer dollars that pay for that piece of this budget. I'm not saying all of it, and I'm not saying that I don't want tax cuts as well, but I want everybody to keep in mind that there is a cost to the safety that we are given by our law enforcement community. And what you've delivered there, which is what they've been asking for, for a long time, because I met with them all summer long, and I asked years back, what did you ask for not getting previous budgets? And they listed all those things, Sheriff's Department included, which we don't even owe them those positions, Commonwealth Attorney Office, we don't even owe her that position. But they are in dire need, and you are giving it to them anyway, because the state can't cover those positions right now for us. And because of that he component, we will have a safer city that we desperately need. I went to a prayer vigil for a 12-year-old girl who was killed this past month. Dr. Wilder can speak to all the things he attends in our city. We have car accidents all the time. We can talk to our firefighters. We go talk to our police department, how understaffed they are, how they're being pulled and, and stretched in every direction, and we need that, because I have said to people numerous times, public safety in schools are actually the main reason people are leaving our city. They are. That's the number one reason, because families will leave if they don't feel safe and their schools aren't good. That's the number one reason. So if we can get our schools in the right direction and our public safety sector strong, and meanwhile, work on a really good tax component, we'll be heading in the right direction. So I am thankful for what you did, and I'm, and I, and I will fight for us to not touch what you've offered there. We'll look at the schools, and we will obviously duke it out with the tax piece, but I want to praise you, because our, our citizens deserve, and our law enforcement community, our firefighters, our 911 call center absolutely deserves everything that you gave them. So thank you. With that said, we look forward to the upcoming weeks. On Tuesday, March 21st, we will meet again upstairs in the second floor training room at 4 o'clock for our first budget reconciliation work session. So thank you very much. All right. Consideration of adopting a resolution authorizing the execution of a Campbell County Stormwater Management Maintenance Agreement between the City of Lynchburg and Campbell County. Council was previously briefed on this item during its February 28th, 2023 business item briefing. Do I have a motion on this?
Motion for approval.
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? No? Let's go ahead and vote.
The motion passes 7-0.
Perfect. Okay. Consideration of adopting a resolution approving the City of Lynchburg's participation in the National Opioid Settlement specific to Teva, Allergan, Walmart, Walgreens, and CVS and their related corporate entities. Council was previously briefed on this item during its February 28th, 2023 business item briefing. Do I have a motion?
Move for approval.
Second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, go ahead and vote.
The motion passes 7-0.
Fabulous. Okay. This is the last thing, y'all. Second reading, this is a consideration of introducing Resolution R. 23015B, amending the fiscal year 2023 general fund budget and appropriating $839,856 from unexpended fiscal year 2020 schools operating fund appropriations for transfer to the fiscal year 2023 schools capital fund to fund RS pain structural and building envelope repair and structural analysis and repair at various schools. So I have a motion?
Move for approval.
Okay, second?
Second.
And again, I'm making this recommendation because, again, the schools are the city's property, they're in dire need of repair. We have seen the condition of Robert S. Payne School, and also some of the other conditions. I think it's security concerns that they also are addressing, so I recommend they make that adjustment to our school system's budget. Thank you.
I want to speak to your second.
Yeah, no, I, I also feel very much the same way. Our presentation on this, the last meeting, and I think that we need to do this for the schools.
Agreed. This is the school that Counselman Taylor and I went and visited and agreed on this, our last meeting, that these are essential repairs that we agreed are needed to be done. So any further discussion? Yes, Counselman Helgason?
This original, I thought, was a divided question. We divided the question, and there are two parts of it.
It was.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
We adopted the agreed part, I believe, in the consent agenda, and then this is the remaining.
This is, gotcha. Thank you.
Okay, we'll go ahead and vote.
The motion passes 4-3.
Okay, great. Well, this meeting is adjourned. Our next meeting will be held next week, March 21st, 2023, at 4:00 PM. Oh, sorry.
There was the consensus from council to readdress the B resolution, or the no-mo.
Oh, the Bs. Sorry. Okay, y'all, we did, if you didn't see the Bee Movie. Okay, so we stopped at the substitute motion.
Can we go over that?
Yes.
Just going back to the no-mo April resolution.
Correct.
No-mo.
No-mo.
No-mo new taxes. I know that. All right, so the substitute motion was to strike paragraph bulleted number two after now therefore be resolved by the Council of the City of Lynchburg, which would leave Lynchburg City Council recognizing no-mo April and promoting and educating folks, but it would take out the lack enforcement.
And that's one I second of it.
Correct.
Yes.
Good.
Okay, was there any discussion on anyone not wanting to remove that section? Or had a problem with removing that section?
Let me just ask clarity. As far as the, are the members from the Bee community here, so I can get?
Oh.
Can I get, can you just give me some clarification on their comments? I just, I just need to, if you come up, is it okay to me?
Yes.
I just need to understand.
And Madam Mayor?
Yes.
If I may interject, had I known y'all were here, I would not have recommended we put it at the back end. I'm so sorry, that's, I'll own that one.
My name is Judy France, and I'm on the Bee City Committee, which is a volunteer assignment, and I'm here to support Parks and Rec, which has really valiantly worked to keep our city having its green spaces maintained during COVID, and part of their agenda has been to be part of obesity, and that is to encourage just cleaner landscape design, which we're trying to work with them, so that we have certain areas that are actually healthier for us all to work and play in, and it's part of economic development. So I am encouraging you to support this proposal. It is only a proposal. People are not going to be required to not mow. For instance, I hope my husband's not listening, my husband's front yard is not look like our backyard. His front yard is pristine, but the backyard will not be mowed in April. It's a voluntary thing. So if you would just please consider it and to look at Parks and Rec and look at their educational agenda, because this is going to be all part of their educational agenda for the city, and it'll be good for the school, the school programs as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy. Can you stay up here just in case someone else has a question for you? Or, or someone else?
No.
No?
Yes. Oh. Okay.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Judy.
I'm on the schedule, I didn't get called up during the other time, but I'm going to leave that aside, because this is just for Beekeeper, talking to the city council.
Oh, okay.
So not mowing the grass is not going to help the bees a lot. It's going to increase your mosquitoes, snakes, rats, et cetera. So it's not recommended. What bees like are bee-appropriate plants. So if we want to be a bee city, we have to encourage people to plant the plants that bees use for generating their energy. You also need a water source, so we encourage people to put out bird feeders, or if we have some kind of recreational activity that has water, bees will be there if they're thirsty. But warn people that if there's not any other water source, there will be bees there. So Mr. Helgason was right on par with everything that needs to be happening. The yards need to be taken care of to keep vermin out of the city and the insects down. I'm going to add a few other things, since I wasn't called, even though I was on your list, or should have been, since I called you personally, with your private phone number that was given to me by Mr. Elery. So as far as your houses go, stop the owner's requirements, so people can rebuild these houses in your areas. Same thing happened in Texas. We had a beautiful area for about 20 years, and it became dilapidated because people couldn't afford the windows, special paint, special glass, everything special. That's what you're seeing here? Just end it, so people can get back into the city and rebuild these houses. So just want to put my two cents and worth, I appreciate your time.
Thank you so much. Okay, so do we want to continue on with the substitute motion to remove that one section?
Maybe we should actually just table this until next meeting, because as a bee pollinator, you know, this kind of reminds me of several years ago, when our city staff said you could only have five chickens on five acres of land, until we actually had the actual chicken experts come in from, that said they can thrive at 10 square feet. So this, and it sounds like Ms. Judy had mentioned that this came from Parks and Rec. Maybe we should ought to, ought to vet this a little bit better through actually the apiens, is that the correct term? Apiaries or apiens or whatever?
Apiary is what we have, we have three of our bee boxes. It's difficult to...
Just call it beekeepers, but use your words.
Beekeepers, good, good. So maybe there are some things that may be actually counterproductive, so maybe we should just table this until the twenty-eighth. Yep. I'll make a motion to table the twenty-eighth.
I'm going to withdraw my substitute, and then I'll second your motion to table.
By consensus, perfect.
Okay, can we consent to twenty-eighth? Yes? Cool. Okay. Yeah, okay. Okay. So now the meeting is adjourned. Our next meeting will be held next week, March twenty-first, twenty-twenty-three, at four P M. in the second floor training room.